All right, I'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, first item in the agenda is approval of the minutes from Monday, October 17. Okay, we had new business Reamer Avenue Deli. We had a release of erosion semi-control bond for LWF LLC. Resolution. We had a discussion, public hearing regarding Stony Brook Estates. We had discussion, public hearing regarding NY Transco LLC, the Dover substation. And then we had, under old business, Harlan Valley Homestead. And then we adjourned the meeting. All right. Motion to accept the minutes made by Member Villano, seconded by Member Williams. Discussion on the minutes. Okay, seeing no discussion, all those in favor of approving of the minutes of October 17, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, say no. Okay, that motion passes five zero with two absences. All right, next we have, under old business, Reamer Avenue Deli. I was informed that the applicant could not make it this evening, unfortunately, but we can still proceed. So, the planning board and our consultants had a site visit. What was the, the date was October?
November 5th.
November 5th, thank you. November 5th. So, we walked through the building, we looked at the plans, and we spoke with the applicant as to what they're looking to do. Again, it's just really a change of use and the amendment to their site plan. Did any members of the planning board and the tenants want to say anything about the sidewalk? All right. We'll just go through our consultants as to what would be the next steps.
Sure. At this time, I think a referral to county planning is appropriate, and the board can choose to declare the action for secret purposes to be a type two at this time.
Again, type two action, just because it's not one of the type one actions, it's not enlisted?
It's specifically just a reuse of an existing building, and there is no significant additions that would make it a type one action being proposed.
And the referral to county planning is only due to its proximity to Route 22, a state highway?
Correct, it's within 500 feet, it's right on the highway.
Right, so if it wasn't within the 500 feet, then it wouldn't need to be referred to county planning?
I could go through every other potential way, but I don't believe so.
That's the only thing, yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you Attorney Lessig. Oh, he's filling in for Attorney Polidaro this evening. Thank you Attorney Lessig. Planner Warner?
Sure, so, we had the site visit, and it turns out that when we were there, the applicant informed us that they have a site plan already from 1991 that was planning board approved. It was for office uses, which turned into that daycare use slash office. So, this is being treated as an amendment to that site plan, to allow the first floor to have a deli towards the front of the building. The apartment on the second floor will remain an apartment. The approved site plan from 91 had 11 parking spaces shown on it. So, with some reconfiguration and some coordination between Joe Berger and I, we calculated they can have about 13 spaces on this, on this site. Across the street from the deli, there's two-hour parking on Mill Street, so there's plenty of parking there as well, if people wanted to stop and run in to get something. The entrance will be along Mill Street there, which is currently boarded up, but that's going to be opened up as the main entrance. Yeah, so what you have on the screen here is the proposed site plan amendment. That includes the entrance, there's ADA access on the left side of the building, which will remain. There's two ADA spaces right there next to that ramp. And if you move north, you've got three spaces next to the garage, which would serve the apartment. And I think we would condition that those be signed as such, when this gets approved, if it does. To the north further, there's eight spaces, there's room for about eight cars there and a dumpster. And we also recommended a concrete walk extending from that parking lot into the basement of the building to allow for loading purposes. And this was all sent to the applicant. They didn't have a problem with this, and they didn't have an engineer to prepare it, so they were okay with Joe and I doing this coordination. So, at this point, since it is a site plan amendment, it doesn't require a public hearing, but we do have to refer it to the county. You might also want to refer it to the fire department, it's up to you.
Right.
And then at the next, possibly at the next meeting, we could have a response from the county, and we can take action at that point.
Okay. Thank you.
The county does have 30 days to respond. I don't know if they'll be able to respond by December 5th, but we could ask them to.
Okay.
But that's, that's it really, it's all we have.
All right, thank you. Just to reiterate what I said before, and at the very start of the meeting, the microphones in the room are recording for broadcast. They are not working with respect to the speakers in the room. So, if we speak louder, it'll sound like we're screaming in people's televisions, so.
No, we need them to speak a little louder.
Okay. So. Thank you. Planner Warner? Engineer Berger, any?
No.
Okay, thank you. Just, you'll have to share the microphone with Planner Warner, thank you. All right, so, with that, so, should those be two separate motions to Dutch County Planning? And for the?
If you so choose to do so tonight, I would recommend, of course, to make the first motion as the SECRE motion, and then to make the motion to county planning.
Okay. And we also need to set escrow for this project, correct? Yes. Okay. All right, so, if you could, please give us your consideration for the escrow numbers. Attorney Lessig, Planner Warner, Engineer Berger.
We have some.
Want to start?
They had the initial $1,000 escrow.
Okay, so I think.
Not sure how much of that they've used.
We had some coordination, and we basically, you know, did the site plan for them. So, you know, that's going to be recouped. So, I think we could start with 3,000 extra, just to be safe, to cover all three of us.
Okay.
3,000?
Yeah, 3.
All right, so, motion to set the Reamer Avenue Deli escrow for an additional $3,000?
An additional or up to $3,000?
Additional.
I think an additional.
An additional?
I made that motion, seconded by Member Williams. Discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion I put forward, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, say no. That motion passes five zero with two absences. Motion to refer the Reamer Avenue Deli application to Dutchess County Planning.
SECRE first.
Motion to, thank you. Motion to deem this a type-two action under SECRE. Motion made by Member Villano, seconded by Member Williams. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of motion to deem Reamer Avenue Deli as a type-two action under SECRE, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, say no. That motion passes five zero with two absences. Motion to refer this Reamer Avenue Deli application to Dutchess County Planning. Motion made by Member Leroy Bedier, seconded by Member Ramon. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, say no. Okay, that motion passes five zero with two absences. All right, is there anything further we need to consider with respect to the Reamer Avenue Deli this evening? Nope. Okay.
Brian?
Yes?
30 days would be after the next meeting, so should I ask for a response before the next meeting?
If you could, yes.
I will.
Because we have a meeting on December 5th and a meeting on December 19th, correct? Okay, 14 days from now, 28 days from now, okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, it's rather straightforward, I would think Dutchess County Planning doesn't need much time on the Reamer Avenue Deli. Okay. Next, under new business, we have the holder lot line adjustment. This is at 83 Sheldon Road?
Yeah, I'm waiting on my turn.
In Wingdale? Okay. All right. With that, make a motion to move on to a public hearing for Stony Brook Estates. Before we get to the actual public hearing, we'll have a discussion. So, we did receive a a letter from attorney for Stony Brook Estates. Dear Chairman Quirteen and Planning Board Members, Keenan Bean PC was recently retained by Brevi Holdings LLC, owner of property located on Route 22 regarding the Stony Brook Estates application pending before the board. We've been in communication with project engineer, and understand that there is outstanding coordination required with New York State DOT, as well as other outside agencies. It is respectfully submitted that for the purpose of efficiency and processing the application before your board, the applicant requires additional time to resolve comments from the outside agencies prior to returning to the planning board to continue the public hearing and complete your review of the application. Therefore, we request that tonight's public hearing be adjourned to your December 19, 2022 meeting. Thank you in advance for your consideration. And then, signed. Then there was also an email, I believe, that said they would be fine if it was in January, correct? Which one's that?
I can't.
I do remember seeing something like that.
Right.
That January would be okay.
Might have been Andrew's email, saying that, no?
Well, I didn't necessarily say what the date to push it to, no.
No, okay.
I don't recall seeing an email about January.
I didn't see anything from them. I didn't see a follow-up from them.
I didn't either. Everyone spoke to him. Call a specific date being asked for.
No. It was the email.
Yeah, here I have it on my phone.
Okay.
The applicant has no objection if the board chooses to adjourn to January?
Yep, okay.
That is the letter?
So then.
The email that said we're asking for December.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so then we have a email from the same Keenan Bean representative, Jennifer Gray, that said essentially the same thing, except that the applicant has no objection if the board chooses to adjourn to January. So, our January meeting would be?
January 23rd.
January 23rd. Okay. All right, is there anything further to discuss before we still continue this public hearing tonight? Any members of the planning board on Stony Brook Estates? Any consultants?
The one thing I would note is, you know, since the public hearing was noted for tonight, anybody who's present tonight, yeah, who wants to speak should be heard, but of course, members of the public who maybe want to speak on this application, and would prefer to wait until December or January, obviously, you'll have a chance then as well.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. All right, with that, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for Stony Brook Estates. Motion made by
Member Williams.
Member Williams, seconded by Member Villano. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor of opening a public hearing on Stony Brook Estates, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, say no. Okay, the public hearing on Stony Brook Estates is now open. Any members of the public wishing to speak will be heard regarding Stony Brook Estates. We have one person who has signed up in advance, and that would be Tom Whalen. So, if you can please come to the podium.
Does this matter will be continued? I'll be exceedingly brief here.
Thank you.
I had inquired last time whether there had been a 239M referral that had been received. I don't know, hadn't heard anything.
You said you were going to contact me at City of Iowa, swaying to pick it up?
Okay, all right, so if I, can I, can I pick that up today, then?
Okay.
All right. That was one point.
Yes.
The other point, yeah, I thought I was going to get a call.
Okay.
The other point I'd like to briefly mention here is, as you know, there has been a case in Supreme Court pending since 2018 regarding the claimed right-of-way over the Whalen property. I recently perfected the appeal to the appellate division regarding this. Judge Greenwald had found that there is a right-of-way, but that it has to be regulated. I'm contesting whether there really is a valid right-of-way.
Okay.
And with the Stony Brook Estates matter, as I understand that the public would have free pedestrian access over the Whalen property in order to reach Stony Brook Estates. I'm aware there's another entrance, but certainly, there's nothing that I've seen that would prohibit pedestrian access. And I would ask this board not to make any ultimate determination regarding the application until the appellate division has ruled. Second point.
Okay.
Third point. The letter from Keenan Bean here makes mention that there needs to be coordination with DOT regarding ingress and egress. And as I understand, that this board is taking the position that any issues pertaining to ingress and egress are entirely within the purview of DOT. But I'd like to urge the board that since the time that this subdivision was conceived many years ago, we have a different, essential difference in Dover Plains, and indeed, an essential difference in the world as to the local difference. We used to have a supermarket in this town, and I believe the board should be very mindful of the fact that to approve a 28-unit rental complex without there being a supermarket and with the necessary ingress and egress for deliveries that this will occasion, that there should be a traffic study that this board requires before the matter even is within DOT's consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Whalen?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on Stony Brook Estates, please come to the podium at this time.
The microphone's not working, some people back here can't hear with the back of the audience. Could you maybe reconsider? There's also a lot of people in the hallway, they may be turning sideways, so we can hear also.
Okay. The microphone reaches where it reaches?
People are even home to watch from home because they couldn't hear.
Okay. So, thank you. Like I said, we're doing the best we can with these technical difficulties. How long is that cord?
It just turns sideways.
Okay, so, the problem is that the, the public hearing is for the planning board to hear public comments, not for the public to hear public comments. So, it has to be directed towards us. I'm sorry if you cannot hear what other people are saying. As you saw before the meeting started, I've been trying to control that as much as possible, that, trying to get people to be able to hear everyone as much as possible. This is the best solution we had. Frankly, if this solution didn't work, we might not be having a meeting right now, because then no one will be able to hear what the public has to say, and it's very important for the people to hear what the public has to say. So, I'm sorry if you can't hear what someone's saying. They can speak up more, I mean, obviously, I'm projecting very well, you can all hear me. My concern is that, just, you know, at some point, you project too much, you sound like you're screaming in people's telephones, in televisions, so.
Now, Brian, the television, the people, the recording that's being streamed, and also will be available on the website.
Yes.
You will be able to hear what the people are saying on that.
Yeah, I was listening to people's audio levels when I was back in the media room. So, as best we can tell, people at home can hear us right now, so.
The only other option I say is, you know, move the mic off to the left a little bit and speak up louder. That way, you're not screaming into the audience at home.
But again, it needs to be directed to the planning board. Attorney Lessig?
Yeah. For a previous meeting, we had a TV set up elsewhere in the building. Is it possible some people could go and listen there?
That could be set up?
It's what?
The television in the other room?
No, well, we were having trouble with that today.
Okay.
Was we weren't trying to hook up the YouTube so that it could stream through?
Okay.
And it went.
Okay.
It crashed.
So. Everyone, again, this is a public hearing for the planning board to hear what the public, all of you, has to say. I, there's no other way for me to say this, other than if you want to hear what everyone said afterwards, you're welcome to replay this meeting at a future date for yourselves. But, we have to continue with the business of the public of the town of Dover, which is to hear from this person here about Stony Brook Estates. Please come to the podium, thank you.
Hi, I'm Heather Yeno.
Put the microphone down, thank you.
I'm Heather Yeno. I think back in August and September, I made comment about your Dover laws state that we have to post for a public hearing on the properties. They did not post in August, September. They did post in October, and they have not posted for this November's meeting. There's people that were sitting behind me that are going, what is Stony Brook Estates about? They don't even know what it's about. They didn't even know there was a hearing for it tonight, if they did know what it was about. You, you state in your Dover Town laws that it's a, it's a law. What's the consequences if we're not doing it?
Attorney Lessig?
The requirement of the law is that the initial date of the public hearing be noticed when the, the public hearing is held, and perhaps it's continued to the next month, or to the next month, or to the next month. It's, it's continued to be properly noticed. If the first date was noticed, so long as at the meeting we determine the next date, it's public record what the next date is going to be.
Okay.
So, up until yesterday, it was not on your agenda online.
Excuse me?
It wasn't on the agenda online for 11/21. It went from 11, from other meetings, now it is. But it wasn't online. I mean, I've checked every day to see, because I wasn't sure if it was the 21st or the 19th, so up until yesterday, or day before yesterday, it wasn't online. And now it is.
The agenda went online?
The agenda was on, not for tonight.
Your agenda's not online for today?
It said, if you went to Dover's site, like Dover Town Hall, it stated it there, like in big, you know, in your big letter. But if you go to agendas and minutes, it was not listed there on the calendar up until two days ago.
Okay. Well, I'll have Secretary Van Millen look into that.
Yeah. I, that, we use a program for that. Right.
And I posted it to Nova's agenda, and then it comes over. If it didn't come up, I don't know.
Right, the other issue I have is, is when you go on to look at your documents, and all your documents, some things are just whited out, like everything's white, there's no words. It looks like, I mean, I can show you if you'd like me to, but it looks, it's still tonight, as I checked, it was like whited out, like documents that were sent in, we can't review. Not every one of them, but some of them.
Are you talking about shared services?
Who?
Shared services?
That, where he was just on, with all the files?
Shared services?
Yes.
Every once in a while, when I get something that's brought over, or PDF, and it comes from New York State, I'll bring it over, but unless I go through and check every single one to make sure it came over, this month alone, the cutoff date was November 4th, which means I am not in the office on the 3rd, the 4th. I didn't come back until the Monday. On Monday, I got four submissions. All the submissions were prepared for shared services.
Right.
Tuesday was Election Day, offices were closed.
Right.
Wednesday, I came in and start putting things over.
No, it says it's there, but when you click on it.
Right.
It's blank.
No, I didn't finish.
Okay.
What happens is sometimes with certain PDFs, it doesn't come over, it comes blank. Unless someone pick up, picks up the phone and calls me and said, I looked at this and it's not there, I will go back and check it. Sometimes, when I have to put in 40 or 50 files in three different places, something does get missed.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm just pointing it out.
But if you would have picked up the phone and called me at the office.
Well, I just noticed, actually, tonight, when I was looking, I noticed it was tonight, so.
I know it's there now, whatever I was told, I was put up.
So, the matter I have is, is like, I just didn't know what is the consequences of not posting this public hearing that they haven't done for three months now? They did in October, but they missed months before that, and like, there's no, there's no rule saying they have to? I mean, I read there was.
So, again, as Attorney Lessig said, when they first, correct me if I'm wrong in retelling what you said, provided that they post for the initial public hearing, then it doesn't need to continue to be reposted on site going forward?
Yeah, I mean, technically, yes, because this is, this is the initial public hearing. It's been adjourned month on month on month to make sure that the public has a continued right to express their, you know, feelings on the matter. But you only have to renotice the public hearing if the public hearing has been closed.
Right.
Or if, for example, it's been adjourned indefinitely, without the board setting a date in the public view at a public hearing. At that point, even though it'd be a continuation of the hearing, you'd have to renotice it again, just so everybody would know it's going to be at this date, at this time, at this place.
So, the language typically we've used here is that we, we're continuing the public hearing to, then this future date, so the last month, we continue it to tonight.
At our meeting on December.
And then tonight, we're going to continue it till December or January, so they don't have to
They don't have to keep posting.
rewrite on the posting on their property that the public hearing is?
Correct, it's the same
Okay.
public hearing, even, even if it does go on for quite a number of months, it's considered to be all.
Now, if that notice falls down, disappears, they're supposed to get a new one, put it back up, presumably?
That's a little bit of minutia, I'd have to look into that
Okay.
about exactly the state of the notice itself on the property, but.
So, my other question was, is back in August and September, I asked about the silt fence that's falling down. But not only is it falling down and not been repaired, I think Berger said he made a comment about it being fixed, it needed to be fixed, and it still hasn't. Not only that, but the silt fence, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know, I'm asking, isn't it supposed to go along the whole property line that it's adjacent with somebody else?
Engineer Berger?
I answered both. No, it doesn't. It only has to go where the erosion was on the plan.
So, he dug behind my septic that's right there, it doesn't come that way towards my septic?
Doesn't have to. It was placed on the plan as long as there was no current erosion going there, I'll check on that. Secondly, we're not MS4, so DEC controls the weekly inspections, we do not.
Okay.
So, I did make my notification to DEC.
Okay.
They, they have their weekly reports, which we look at, and they have been notified to DEC.
Okay.
But the enforcement is through DEC, not through the town on this.
I was just asking, because winter's coming and.
I could certainly talk.
You can make another notice to the DEC?
Yeah, I could certainly talk to Don Anderson. We have this with many projects with ours, and I could certainly talk to Don Anderson about what we can do to step up some enforcement. But not being a MS4, we have, I know it's tough, I know it's, I don't like saying this to you, but we have, just like DOT, we have limited involvement.
Right.
In their, in their, in their permit that they got from the DEC. They do have a Chapter 65 from us, so we have some recourse.
Right.
And I'll talk to Don Anderson tomorrow about that, what we, what we can do.
Thank you.
But I can't guarantee it's the same strength that DEC could do.
Sure.
And I could still notify DEC as well, which I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're not doing weekly inspections, like, if we were MS4, we'd be doing weekly inspections there.
Right. Okay. Understood, thank you.
But with this notice, I can take two actions, and I will.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak regarding Stony Brook Estates, please come to the podium at this time? Please just state your name.
Cara O'Neil. I had a question, is Stony Brook Estates the estate close to the firehouse?
Behind the Dover Station 1 Firehouse?
Okay, that's what I was thinking. So, my concern about that is, previous. previously, I remember the Land Conservancy bought a big chunk of that to preserve Stone Church. And I think that Stone Church is one of the few places in Dover Plains that really draws a lot of public, especially after COVID. It was, drew a lot of business actually to Dover. Restaurants benefited from it. My concern is the aquifer goes underneath that area. There's that substation that provides water for pools and stuff like that, like Dover's known for its great drinking water. There's that.
It provides water for the whole village area of Dover Plains.
Right. And also, one of the beauties of Dover is Stone Church. And I'm against seeing condos, you know, there towards the entrance of Stone Church. Even though it's off to the side, it's still in the view shed. And also, just sewer and all that stuff, possible leakage going into the Dover water system. And several years ago, it's maybe ten years ago when we had all that flooding, that whole area really got flooded as well. So it's kind of in a, it is in a flood plain. So that kind of combination of developing there, I'm, I'm not happy about that. I'm concerned about that. So I would be against that. I know Dover needs housing, but I don't think that's the best location for it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak about Stony Brook Estates? Please come to the podium at this time. Okay, seeing no one approaching the podium. January 23rd, was it? Okay. Just to give the applicant as much time as they may need to submit documents, and because also they were perfectly fine with it being continued to January, I'll make a motion that we continue the Stony Brook Estates public hearing to January 23rd, 2023. Motion made by myself, seconded by, seconded by Member Ramon. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any posts say no. Okay, that motion passes 5-0 with two absences. All right. Holder Lot Line Adjustment.
Good evening.
Evening. Appearance? Yes.
Good evening all. My name is Rocco Vozza. I'm appearing on behalf of Catherine and Raymond Holder in connection with an application currently before you. I've submitted some documentation. I know we've had some recent communication, as recent as Friday. I was waiting for the surveyor specifically to come up with a zoning chart. I do have that with me today, although as of Friday, I did not have that. I would like to, if there are any questions, I'd like to address any questions, concerns. Otherwise, I'd be happy to kind of go through the, what the application is really about.
Do that first, and then we'll see if there's any questions.
So my clients wish to erect a garage on their property. It's a three-car garage. It's adjacent to their property. And the property, the garage size is 36 by 36. And currently, there is an agreement or understanding with the neighbor. The property in, my client's property is located at 83 Sheldon Road. Their neighbor, who are the Carringtons, have agreed to convey to them, subject to approval of the subdivision, a portion of their property, which would satisfy the thirty, the thirty?
This portion, okay.
The, the 30-foot side yard setback. So as you can see, there's an existing garage foundation, if you will, that is, that is grade level. So the neighbor would then convey to them, subject to the approval, the 30-foot, the additional property required to achieve the 30-foot side back, side yard setback. If you'll notice, there is a, it is a radial type of conveyance. And that is, we've basically come up with that after an initial meeting and discussion with respect to the, the Holder property. And we felt that this would be the most conducive way to achieve the required side yard setbacks. I do also, as I said, I do have, which I just received today, the zoning analysis on the property as well, which does indicate the, the impermeable surface, the required on one acres, 20%. The garage as built with the additional properties would only encompass 17%. There's, there was also some discussion, you'll, you'll see that there is a small shed in front of the garage there. We've indicated, again, there was a request to indicate that that would be removed. My client is here also indicating that that would in fact be removed. And theoretically, any materials that were in there would now be used or housed in the, in the garage. So I think it's a, it's a, basically a simple matter. I'd be happy to address any, you know, questions or concerns that you might have at this point.
All right. Thank you. So again, so your client built a garage foundation on your client's property, but too close to the neighbor's property line with respect to the town of Dover zoning code.
That's correct.
Okay. And so the conveyance of this piece of land from Carrington to Holder would resolve their zoning issue?
Exactly.
Okay. All right. And the shed would be removed? Okay. Does anybody, any members of the planning board have any comments, questions?
I'm curious why, yes, thank you. I'm curious about why take this approach of conveying part of the neighbor's property rather than applying for a zoning variance?
Well, we, we, we thought that it would be easier that way. When we did meet, you know, with the officials and got information, we, we thought that would be the easiest solution. The, the neighboring property, there is plenty of property there. So we just, we just thought that would be the easiest solution. And, and of course, the, and the most feasible, because since the, since the side yard setback is 30 feet, we really only would have had a very small portion of that. So the variance would, could possibly be considered, you know, substantial variance. And, you know, perhaps not looked upon very favorably. So we thought that this would be the easiest solution to the problem that we had.
And you could have gone to the zoning board, and they could have denied you, and then you'd be here anyway, two, three months from now.
Exactly. So when I, when I, when I say that it was the most feasible solution, that's in and out, and kind of looking at the situation as it existed, that side yard setback, and the amount that we would be asking for a variance from, again, could be considered substantial. And, and that may be one of the criterias for not having approval for that, so.
Ryan, I saw that you had parcel access. Could we see?
Yeah, the lines on parcel access, as we all know, are not entirely accurate.
I just wanted to get an image of the, the buildings that are there now. Because I wasn't quite following that on the, on the line drawing.
So again, as we've discussed in the past, the real line is probably, you know, it's supposed to be right here.
Yeah, it's way past that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you see, because right where your, right where your pointer is there, that's, that's the, that's Mr. Holder's driveway.
This is the shed, right?
And, yes, exactly.
So the real line is here, probably because this line here is supposed to be more closer to the road. This line's supposed to be farther away from the road. Everything in this area is just a little shifted off.
We did also provide a, a Google Earth view, which you can, you know, see. And, and again, renders, gives you a little bit more of an idea, and kind of puts it all into perspective.
Okay.
I, I was trying to figure out where this existing foundation is on, when we're looking in parcel access.
So it could be that the image here predates. Well, it would be there, so maybe it's.
For their par.
So do you have a car on the foundation?
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
So that is the foundation?
So that is the foundation.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, and then, and then that's the, okay, got it.
You can't really see because the line kind of gives you an idea that the property line is way over, but.
So again, this yellow line should be really like here. And so then, if, since the line should be here, you need this piece, this curve, basically curved piece.
Thank you.
Anything further?
No.
Okay, thank you, Member Ramon. Any other members of the planning board have any comments, questions at this time? Okay.
I, I do have, as I said, which I quite literally just received.
Yeah, please submit that to the planning board secretary before we're done this evening. Thank you. So Attorney Lessig, you're going to inform us of, even though this is a very minor thing, we still need to have a public hearing. Please go ahead.
That is correct.
Okay.
And obviously, you need to pick a time and a date for that, give the proper notice, of course. Marilyn, I know knows how to do that. And I think we're also looking for authorization.
Right from the, the Carrington.
I had hoped to have that, quite honestly. I, I've had mentioned it, but I was going to forward over the authorization form. But I'd be happy to get that tomorrow.
Okay. And with that incoming, that should not preclude us from setting a public hearing? Provided we receive it before the public hearing?
No, no, it would be appropriate. At this point, we know what it is that they are proposing. And of course, ultimately, at the end of the day, this board can give the blessing to moving the property line. But at the end of the day, somebody's got to sign something that gets filed for the county clerk's office. And that includes the adjoining property owner.
Right. Right. So in the end, it's a, right, a document that's signed by Holder, Carrington. The planning board authorizes me to sign on the town to the app, right?
You approve it to happen, but ultimately, of course, there's a transfer of property, so.
At the public hearing, if someone from Carrington says, I don't have an authorization letter, I don't want this to happen, obviously, that's the end of the whole matter.
Right.
You're saying that's not going to happen. There'll be a letter incoming.
And again, I don't perceive it to be any kind of an issue at all.
All right. So we have a meeting in 14 days. We have a meeting in 28 days.
I could get the notice out tomorrow.
That gives us sufficient time? Okay. All right. So let's go through the rest of our consultants, and then we'll proceed. Anything further, Attorney Lessig?
I'll note, it was noted that there's a zoning table. I assume that's going to be submitted soon as part of a new rendition of the map.
I do have that today. That was emailed to me, and I could submit originals again as soon as tomorrow.
Okay. That needs to go to Secretary Van Millen, okay.
And obviously, I think we've already reviewed the, the signature blocks as well that are required, that I think.
The signature boxes are also included here.
Nothing more from me.
All right, thank you. Planner Werner?
Yep. So even though this is a, it's a minor subdivision, it still has the public hearing requirement, so we'll do that. Sounds like you want to do it for the next meeting. We did note, this is also a type 2 action for SECRE, granting of individual setback and lot line variances and adjustments. So you can declare that a type 2 tonight.
Okay.
We did ask for the authorization letter from the other property owner. It sounds like that's in process. Just my memo notes that the property is .84 acres, which is the Holder property that is, is existing non-conforming. But what they're doing here isn't going to worsen that non-conformance, so it's really not an issue. We had a pre-application meeting in August where we talked about four things we wanted to see on the plat when it came in, right? First was wells and septic. They showed that.
Yes.
Showed that the existing shed's going to be removed. They showed that. The zoning table, which sounds like they just did. And a permission to file signature line for the county health department and the planning board should also be on the map. I don't know if that was done, but.
The permission?
Yeah.
It's a non-reality.
Yeah, so you need a permission to file line from the county health department. And you also need a planning board chairman's signature line.
I have the, I, I have both of those signature lines on the.
The new one. The new map.
On the new map.
All right, okay.
I'll have one more question.
That's not, there's a special form for health departments, just not a signature.
Okay.
Who's your surveyor? Have him contact me. I'll get him. There's a, for the board, there's an actual block that the health department requires placed on there for the health department to sign.
Okay.
That has to be signed prior to that map coming to the chairman to sign.
Sure.
It's called permission to file.
Okay.
It's a statement of fact that the both owners have to sign.
Right.
On their statement to certain things. So the health department is not granting an approval or review of this map. It's only giving them permission to file it at the county clerks. So they're not approving the septic or their well, nor did they review, and they make a statement of that. So it's clear to the public that the health department approval was not an approval of the existing systems.
Okay. Thank you. Planner Werner, anything?
Yeah, so I think if we get this map updated between now and the hearing, should be okay.
Okay.
Spent any problem with that?
Yeah, so tonight you can do that. You can type to it instead of hearing.
All right. Thank you. Engineer Berger, anything further? Okay, thank you for helping them out with what they need to have on there.
Thank you.
All right, hearing from our consultants. Does any member of the planning board have any additional comments, questions at this time?
Yeah, I believe we need the word none filled in on the disclosure of interest under paragraph four.
Okay, so. Yep, so there's this disclosure of interest form. So you just have to.
Just write the word none in the blank at the bottom of the page.
Should we do that now?
Yeah, I think.
Well, this was signed, I believe, by.
Kate Holder.
One of the holders.
Kate Holder.
Okay. So they just have to come in and fix that with the secretary?
Correct it.
But thank you for seeing that. Anything further? Okay, so seeing nothing further to discuss, motion to deem this a type 2 action under SECRE. Motion made by Member Vilano, seconded by Member Ramon. Discussion. Okay, seeing no discussion, all those in favor of deeming the Holder Lot Line Adjustment as a type 2 action on the SECRE? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any posts say no? Okay, the motion passes 5-0 with two absences. Motion to set a public hearing for Monday, December 5th at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter, as the planning board can hear from the public. Motion made by myself, seconded by Member Vilano. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of setting a public hearing for the Holder Lot Line Change for Monday, December 5th at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter, as the planning board can hear such public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any posts say no? And the motion passes 5-0 with two absences. All right, anything further for Holder Lot Line? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Can I hand just these up? These are just, can I give those to you, Marilyn?
No, this is their first appearance.
All right, so at this time, thank you again. All right, at this time, we'll have a discussion, and then continue the public hearing with regard to NY Transco. So we start with the applicant coming to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Anthony Morando. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Cuddy and Fader, and I'm here tonight with New York Transco. We're back for our third public hearing session before this board and the public. Tonight with us, we have Sam Johnson from New York Transco. Shannon, unfortunately, has sickness at home, so she's not here. However, we also have Diane Riley and Heather Valiant from TRC, our environmental consultants. Tonight, if it's acceptable to the planning board, we'd like to start with a little bit longer of a presentation than we have over the prior months, as we've been here for, for several months now. And after listening to the public speak for, for the last three hearings, two hearings, we, we wanted to touch on a number of. We wanted to touch on a number of things that we've heard.
Okay.
Correct any misstatements and hopefully answer a number of questions that we've heard over the last few months.
Okay.
Sam? Mr. Chairman, it's the, yep. Bottom one.
This one.
Yep. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
I don't know how to reverse project. I'm sorry.
Do your best to project your voice, please. Thank you. Next slide.
Please. Okay. So as we've previously discussed, the state of New York has established the most ambitious climate goals and energy targets in the country. The state, including all of us, are moving away from relying on traditional forms of energy such as fossil fuels. And this is a good thing overall. I think everyone would agree on that. But it does require critical upgrades to the existing New York State Transmission System. And Dover Station is an essential project for that. Renewable energy cannot be utilized if we do not install new transmission. Dover is not unique in that, like Dover, many state towns have existing transmission lines that must tie into substations. Notably, approximately 370 bulk stations exist in the state today. These are quotes on the left side from the New York Independent System Operator, talking about the expansion of transmission. And on the right, there's a couple quotes from the governor and the lieutenant governor as well. And I'm not going to read them. You know, folks can certainly, certainly look at them. Next slide, please. So we'd like to clear up a few things that we've, that we've heard rumors going around. And I'll start quickly with what Dover Station is not, and then I'll switch over to what Dover Station is. So Dover Station is not a power plant. It is not a generation facility. It does not produce traffic. It does not produce light under normal conditions. It does not produce air emissions. It does not produce wastewater. It does not use water. It does not adversely affect any aquifers or water sources. It does not involve natural gas, nor does it involve fracking of natural gas. The site is not a superfund or contaminated property. Environmental analysis for wetlands, species, and other topics are based on current site visits, tests, and expert reviews. They are not based on outdated maps, and they are not based on old studies. Dover Station is not seeking a pilot or any tax abatements. And finally, a couple other misstatements that we're not sure where they came from. But Dover Station will not block the flow of excess power from Connecticut to New York or vice versa. It's a, it's a method of controlling that power. Dover Station is not involved or the subject of any dispute between ISO New England and ISO New York. And Dover Station has nothing to do with CEVAC or where the power goes from CEVAC. That is decided by New York.
CEVAC is Cricket Valley Energy Center.
Cricket Valley Energy Center, yes, sorry.
To be clear for everyone who.
Yes. Thank you. All right. Next slide, please.
Okay.
So again, I'll be, I'll be brief on this. We've, we've looked at this slide several times. Dover Station is an unoccupied electric substation with lines and poles. It contains typical substation equipment, including par transformers, overhead buswork, breakers, control equipment, fencing, lightning protection, and overhead interconnection lines and poles. It's a common type of land use in the Hudson Valley and all of New York. And the big key here is it is permitted as part of the CO district. As we've discussed earlier, it will contain three transformers. Those are in orange, highlighted in orange, one being a spare. There's a control house or a control unit in the blue. And then the two transmission poles that tie into the Con Ed 398 right of way are there in yellow.
A little tougher people to see. So that's here and here. And there'll be an additional pole on the other side of Cricket.
That's correct. If you draw the line. I have a, another slide that discussed that.
Next slide?
Slide, please. Yep. A member of the public asked for some aerial comparisons of the Dover Station. So we've got one on the left there, which is one of our models. And if you look at the fenced area that we're proposing is five acres with the full parcel approximately 16 acres. And we are proposing overhead lines, as you can see on the very top, that would stretch out to the right of way.
Okay. So just Cricket Hill Road is here. You have north going to the left?
I'm sorry. North is going to the left in this case. Yes.
So Cricket Hill Road is here. So Route 22 is, I'm trying not to get the laser in your eyes. Sorry.
Across the bottom.
Across the bottom. Okay. Okay. And you're showing the, these two poles here and then the third pole there?
Correct.
Okay. And then this is fencing, the silver line? Okay. And so the poles are in their own separate fencing from the rest of the, okay. Please continue.
Okay. We talked a little bit about the Pauling Station in one of our other meetings. This is the one in Pauling Village. It's 176 Charles Coleman Boulevard in Duchess County. It is a NiSEG substation and is a distribution. So high voltage energy comes in here. It's converted to low voltage energy and goes out to the residents of Pauling. The fenced area is approximately two acres, so that would be the gray area that you see. And the full parcel is approximately six acres. And again, it has a series of overhead lines that go in and out of this station, both for bringing in the energy and then taking it out again as it goes to residences. So the third option that we brought in is in East Fishkill. This is 101 Power Drive in East Fishkill. It's a Con Ed substation and is a bulk transmission substation. It is 12 and a half acres of fenced with approximately 20 acres of parcels. And again, there are several overhead lines that go in and out of this station. This is one of the bigger bulk stations in this region. So we've kind of fit in between the two, if you go from a size perspective.
Let me just.
Yep.
Give me a minute here, please. So I would have two strong suggestions about this. One, you should have the, you know, the parcel mapping here, like you have on the other two. Then also, I wouldn't want anyone to think that you're being somewhat disingenuous in that this is two acres and this is five acres, when it makes it look like this is bigger than that one, when it's clearly smaller. So I would suggest in the future, you try and have everything the same scale, please. Okay. Thank you. Anything further on this slide?
No. If you go back one slide, though.
Sure.
So this, this sort of gives you that same view, but with the full station, the way it's shown with the, with the lot lines on it. Again, yes, no problem.
Thank you. Anything further on this slide?
No. Thank you.
Okay.
So why Dover at this, at this location? Bottom line is it meets all the requirements that we need to build the substation. It's the connection to the Con Ed 398 line. It's the proximity to the Connecticut border, but in New York. Frontage on state highway to allow us to get materials onsite. It has the suitable topography and substation, for the substation, and site access. It is the right parcel size. It's avoiding environmental impacts. We've specifically designed this to have no impacts to the environment. It does allow an opportunity for landscaping, as we discussed earlier. There's over 250 proposed plantings. A lot of them being mature trees to start the screening right away. And again, it's a permitted use in the CO district. The next slide is, again, a reminder of our construction window. It's a year, approximately estimated to take a year. The site development would be approximately four months. This would be vegetation removal, soil and rock removal, and overall site grading. The electrical construction would take approximately six months, and this would be substation foundations, electromechanical installations, equipment delivery and installation, and then the transmission foundations and poles. And then the testing and commissioning phase of the project, equipment operations testing, communication verification, operational testing, and the project energization. So the heavy, the heavy machinery, the heavy sounds, the heavy, the blasting that will occur will all occur in that first four months of the schedule. And then from that point on, it's more, you're building from the, from the ground up. There will be cranes. There will be that kind of thing, but, but way less from a noise generating type activities.
And when you say vegetation and removal, you're talking about trees, but other things?
Some of the scrub brush that's there, yes.
Just remind the planning board, what, is there some kind of restriction that you need to operate under with respect to removal of trees?
Sure. The DEC has to have all tree clearing, which means dropped trees, not necessarily stumping. But by the end of March, so March 31st, and that's for the bats. That's a bat prohibition.
Particularly the Indiana.
Indiana bat, yes. There's another one on its way, but it's not here yet.
Sure. And how long should that vegetation removal, specifically the trees, take?
We're thinking three to four weeks. As a reminder, we also have to remove the debris pile by, by March 31st as well. So that's a secondary consideration, separate from the tree clearing, but.
I'm not familiar with Indiana bats looking to inhabit debris piles. So why do you need, have that restricted?
It was a frozen ground condition. The DEC, if you recall, when we've presented, they, they decided they wanted it done by March 31st. I think that's a little more for the turtles, because the turtles start coming out of hibernation. They wanted to make sure we were out of there.
All right. So it's November 21st. So what is your thinking then on the timeframe of this estimated four months of site development?
We're hoping to get the trees done by the 31st, and then we'll have to reevaluate where we are at that point.
Okay.
But agreed, we are time constrained at this.
And you said the tree removal would take you three to four weeks. So essentially, the month of March, you could get that done. Okay. And then the soil and rock removal?
We can't start blasting until April 1st. Again, that's another condition.
Right.
So that would be.
So it has to be after?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay. Anything further on this slide?
Nope.
Okay.
So just a quick summary, you know, by the numbers from the planning board process. I won't go into all the reports or things like that, but this has been about an 18-month process. We've made nine planning board appearances, had three public hearings, this being the third. We've had nine large submissions of information and studies, and we've produced 56 reports, analyses, and other submitted documents. Our pre-application meeting was held in April of 2021. And the town board meeting, we also had on January of 2022. That was a special meeting in front of the town board. Next slide. So these are all the agencies that we've dealt with over the process. Starting with SHPO, which is the historical preservation of buildings and archaeological items. Who has, who have determined that the project will not have a visual effect or significantly detract from character-defining features of historic properties. The Army Corps gave us an AJD and an NPR, basically that the project does not affect waters that are federally regulated. It's a yea or nay, and if it is yea, there's a bunch of things you have to do. In this case, it's a nay. The DEC has stated that the project will avoid changes to the chemistry, quality, and quality of subsurface and groundwater entering the adjacent wetland. And it does not require a Part 182 incidental take permit. And then again, the voluntary removal of the debris. And for the FAA's perspective, the project has received determination of no hazard, which means there are no markers or lighting required. We're effectively at the same height as existing structures today. And with the Cricket Valley smokestacks being lit, there's no requirement for us to, to be lit as well.
Okay.
All right. Want to talk a little bit about the proposed overhead layout. You did just see the model a few minutes ago, and I'll show it again as we come up. So effectively, the three yellow dots are the transmission structures, two within the station itself, and the new one being proposed on the right of way. The photograph that we have here is an example of the proposed transmission pole. It'll be substantially the same style as, as the ones that are part of the Cricket Valley Energy Center today. It's consistent with existing poles. It's a short overhead crossing of 400 feet across Route 26. And it will connect with the existing overhead transmission lines. And the black, the black two lines there are stylized and meant to represent energy path coming in, and then an energy path going back out to the right of way, on the left and the right, respectively.
All right.
Next slide, please. So this is an underground concept. I will tell you, this is a conceptual drawing only. We have not, we've not done much design work on this.
On the left is a conceptual drawing.
Correct.
The right are actual photos.
The right are actual photos. Again, these are, these are example photos of what we'd see. So the P in the top left corner is the existing ladder structure that's there today that we are proposing to replace with an H-frame. The reason we put it on there is it's significant in the fact that we need to split the lines into two separate directions at this point, to, to take two separate riser poles, which is the photograph on the right. This particular photograph was taken in Newark and represents a 345 KV riser structure. And there's three lines going into that. There's three high pots. You can sort of see one is slightly hidden behind the pole. Those lines then go underground and would enter into the station.
The high pot, that's the high pot?
Correct, yeah.
So for everybody who missed it so quickly, the high pot is this?
Correct.
Right there. Okay.
And the reason you need two sets on each side is because of the opacity of the cable to get, to get that amount of energy through the cable. You need two sets of cables to go there. So you'd have one set coming in. The termination structure, so those are approximately 90 feet tall. Again, not designed, but that particular structure is about 90 feet tall. And it would be somewhere in that 80, 90, 100, somewhere in there.
Okay.
The termination structure is inside the station. You have one to go in and one to come out, similar to, to overhead. 50 feet tall are approximately what those are. And then back to the right of way, where you'd have two more riser structures, and again, sort of in the approximate layout that we have there.
Okay. And so again, these would be, it wouldn't look like this, but this piece would be here or in here, and it would be approximately 50 feet tall. And this would be here, 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 and here. It would be 80 to 100 feet tall.
Somewhere in there, yes.
And then just remind everyone that this would be how tall in these three places?
145 feet.
145 feet. So if this is approved one way or the other, it's either three 145-foot poles like in this configuration. Or four 80, 100-feet-tall poles here, two 50-foot-tall poles there. Okay? Please continue. Sorry.
So again, the key factor is the risk reliability concerned of prolonged outages with underground. I think we've spoken about that a lot.
This is the slide you want, right?
Well, it's all the same.
Okay. Okay.
And again, I think you asked us to find a comparable situation where, where this was, and we were not able to find one in New York State where it's this rural, and there's this, such a short span. To go from the right of way to the station and vice versa. So from overhead, just, just a few categories of comparison. So the outage duration and repair timeframes are hours to days for overhead, several weeks to months, depending on the fault. It's consistent with the infrastructure on overhead and not with underground. Again, we discussed the visible equipment already. From a construction perspective, it'd be minutes to hang the wire and string it across the road. Whereas the underground could take weeks to months, depending on the amount of blasting and tree removal that's required. As we know, there's lots of hard rock out there, so. And then cost, although it's not a factor in any decision here. It is a lower-cost option to go overhead, and we've estimated, I think, in our last submitted, that it was 17 times higher to go underground in this particular location.
Right. You had the costs of overhead to be approximately half a million, so dollars, and. Underground to be eight point something, nine million.
Something like that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Next slide, please. So there was also a member of the public or a comment from the public that asked about certain resources, so we decided to put them on a map. Dover Station is shown in green at the corner of Cricket Hill and Route 22. All of the other. Locations of the Stone Church of Seven Dwell, Dwell Hall, and Nellie Hill, the Perry Reserve, and the Appalachian Trail are over three miles away. I understand there are some other. Resources that are closer, like the Great Swamp is obviously a buddy. But from these particular things that were, or sites that were noted, we are more than four miles away. All will have no visibility of the station. The area consists of significant amount of topographic relief and vegetation. The Dover Station project is in a valley, and this combined with the existing vegetation limits, overall visibility and long-distance views of the project. When we originally submitted our visual analysis, we did a full three-mile study area of places that could see. The, the site, it was less than 2% of that three-mile circle could see our proposal. The site, it was less than 2% of that three-mile circle could see our proposed site. And most of that area is from various locations along the Con Ed right-of-way because the trees are cleared, which kind of makes sense. Views are minimized as commuters will be traveling quickly past Dover Site. It's 55 mile-hour speed limit, or 45 on, or 40, I guess at that point, on Cricket Hill. And Dover Station will not have an impact, or adverse impact, on designated natural scenic or historic resources or locations of potential local interest, as we've noted here.
Okay.
All right, next slide. So these were also part of our site plan set. Again, this is, someone is asking what the station would look like, so we've, I'll show this and then I'll show a different view. But again, the north elevation is if you're standing on Route 26, looking to the south. And the west elevation is if you're standing on Route 22, looking to the east.
And that's if there's no trees, hills?
No, no topography.
Okay.
So you can see the different layouts of the power units and the transmission structure, and the A-frames, and the lightning mast.
Okay.
So the next slide is new. And this is the Dover Station model. So this was effectively when the designers were done their 3D CAD models. It was then converted into an image, and this is what that image looked like, will look like.
Okay.
When done. So the bottom right is the entrance. And so this view is probably taken somewhere on Cricket Valley Energy Center's property at an elevation of maybe, I'm guessing, 500, 600 feet in the air.
Okay.
And nobody will have this view. This is just stylized so that people could understand what it would look like in three dimensions. So we have the turnaround is the sort of square on the right, right there. The very next item is the spare transformer with the two lightning masts. More in the background in that orange is the control unit, right back in there, yep. The two active transformers are in the midst of those, yep, right in there. And then more lightning masts, and then you can't really see them, but there's some breakers and switches in between.
This part?
You get to the A-frame at the back of the property, which is the horizontal line there, and then the two transmission towers that are inside the property there.
And it's tough to see on the screen here, but the wires, so there's three levels of wires going across?
Correct, yep.
Okay, what's the shortest height for the wires from the road to?
It's actually pretty high. We have to clear the NICE lines that are there. So those, I'll have to beat you that.
Okay.
It's like 30 feet plus whatever, so probably 60, 70 feet at that point, which is why the towers have to be so high.
Okay. And again, here's, Route 22 would be here, Cricket Hill Road would be here.
So again, we input that model into, and I have to get my expert to write this down for me, so I'll just read it. So when we did the visual simulations, we took photographs from public accessible locations and converted those photographs into a GIS-type format. It was then matched with LiDAR, it's the High Resolution Light Detection and Imaging. Effectively, it's another way of getting topography on the land. It's a, they shoot lasers from a helicopter and measure the bounces, so you can get the topography of the land. And then all of that's imported, including the model, into a design model, which is then incorporated with visualization software, and that allows the technical expert to remove vegetation. So for instance, where we're clearing, he was able to remove trees and then add in some of our plantings and things that we've done. So if you look at the next slide, this is again one we've presented quite a few times, but that's the existing conditions today. Is if you're on the far side of Route 22, looking at the red fence. And then the next slide there, you can see that we've got the model in the background. This is five years with LEAF OFF, I believe. That's the entranceway. And again, with the vegetation, they've been able to model that in. So it's all highly technical and extremely accurate in the way that they put these models together. And this is obviously a representative view of somewhere that somebody could stand and look at the station.
Okay.
So the last two slides are just summary slides. So other area of projects we are not connected with Cricket Valley in any way, and there's no room for expansion on this property. The purpose is to support the state's clean energy goals and to bolster the grid liability and resiliency. The location meets the NISO criteria. It's in a CO district, and it's not a town dump site or EPA Superfund site. The wetlands, the DEC again, has said that we will have no impacts, and no permit is required for listed species. We've done detailed visual simulations. The SHPO has said there's no impact to historic preserved properties. And again, we're going to plant more than 250 mature vegetative buffer, and it is unlit.
Okay.
So again, construction, we've worked with the DEC to minimize blasting effects, and they've agreed that there won't be any to the wetlands. Construction will last a year duration. We do have sound testing protocols once the facility is complete. And then during construction, minimizing noise as best as possible. From taxes perspective, again, we've said no pilot, and we're first-year estimates. Once in service is $1.8 million of local taxes, state or county and local.
School, county, town?
Yep, right. Decommissioning, there was a plan submitted. It's under the Planning Board Review. And we've had some back and forth on those, and we continue to develop those. Environmental justice, it's not subject to EJ. And we even did a site-specific analysis that does, I don't know what the right word is. But it excludes it from being part of EJ and does not contribute to or increase any communicative pollution burden. And from a good neighbor perspective, you'll have to trust me, but we're a good company. We're here to do the right thing, and we've proven that in other projects in Duchess County, as well as other towns in the area.
Okay.
And always our contact information, yep.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Did you have anything further to present?
I do not, no.
I mean, you, as in Transco?
Yes, no. So we have, we have an environmental specialist and an EJ specialist, if you have specific questions for them. Otherwise, I'm here to answer any further things you may ask.
Okay. So while I have this up, any members of the planning board have any comments, questions on this presentation?
No, not at this time.
Not on that, no.
Do we have a copy of this electronically?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
I believe it's been posted or will be posted as well.
Okay. Anything further, Mayor LaRoe Deere?
No.
Okay. Mayor Williams, anything else? Okay. All right. Any, any members have any comments or questions on anything else up to this point? Member Valano?
No.
Okay. What's that? Member LaRoe Deere? Anything further on anything else with respect to NY Transco? Okay. Member Williams?
Nothing.
Okay. Member Ramon, go ahead.
Okay, so we received this booklet from you, and I was pleased to see how you put together the sort of a spreadsheet of questions and facts.
Yes.
And I had a few questions about it. The very first one on the Dover Station facts, the last sentence says that it represents a 17,300% increase in tax payments from the current owner and use. But I thought that Transco is the current owner at this point. Is that correct?
So we're finalizing that transaction. It will be done by the end of the month.
Oh, so it's not, it's not depleted yet?
We are already paying the taxes.
Okay, so the sale is in process.
You mean the?
In progress.
The property includes what everyone around here would think of as the old Cablevision building.
Correct.
It hasn't been that for a few years now, but they've been paying taxes. So you're saying, so now you've been paying those taxes? Someone's paying taxes. Right. And so you're saying?
And ownership is in the process of being transferred.
And once, once, and if this is approved, and once you build it, that's where the percent increase in taxes comes from.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, my question was really just about the status of the ownership.
Understood.
Okay. I understand that the project is not affiliated with Cricket Valley in any way, and you stated that if it wasn't located in, if CVEC was not located in Dover, this project would still have to be in Dover in the proposed location. And I'm questioning the phrase, would still have to be. Are there no other possible locations for this project to be?
So NISO has dictated that this project needs to be between CVEC and the Connecticut border, right? So when they do their, their studies that go forward, they basically look at the assets that are already built. So if CVEC was not there, the next station down is Pleasant Valley on that line. So it would have to be somewhere between Pleasant Valley and the Connecticut border. And this particular site happens to be one of the best locations from, again, approximated to the 398 line and approximated to Route 22, which gives us a great way to get equipment in and out of that particular site, as well as everything else we've said. So I, you know, it's our estimation that it would still have to be in this exact area.
So between Cricket Valley Energy and the Connecticut line, we're talking about pretty much the length of Cricket Valley Road going toward Old Route 22.
It's approximately three miles, yes.
And you couldn't go further in on Cricket Valley Road because you need to be near Route 22, need to be near a state route?
Yeah, so if you, if you follow the way Cricket Valley Road, it actually comes a little bit to the east. Cricket Hill, sir, I'm, thank you.
Sorry, Cricket Hill, yes.
It comes to the east and then goes south away from the right-of-way. So we need, we need a property that's adjacent to the right-of-way or close enough that you're crossing the street into the right-of-way. So as you get further and further, Cricket Hill Road then goes too far away from, from, from the right-of-way.
So this really is the one and only location that this could be under the guidelines of having to be between Cricket Valley and Connecticut?
Correct.
Okay. And, and you said if Cricket Valley was not located in Dover, the station would still have to be in this location, but now you just said that if CVEC was not located in Dover, it would have to be between the Pleasant Valley location.
But again, if you look at the properties that stretch on the way back, yep.
It's, okay. Then I'm going to skip that part. Some of these, some of the questions that I had noted have already been answered.
So let's know what page.
Okay, I'll, I'm just skipping through because some of my questions have been answered.
Okay.
I must have somehow missed the decommissioning plan. I guess that must be on our website. I'll have to go look for that because I haven't seen the decommissioning plan. That's all that I have. Do we have the decommissioning plan up on the website?
Should.
They may be working with the attorneys on the decommissioning plan.
It was submitted formally, but I think they've been working with Victoria's office on it.
The big box was not for this project. I got a big box for Harley-Homestead. So, yeah, I just, I haven't seen the decommissioning plan, and I was wondering how I would access that.
Okay. So Planner Werner, have you seen the decommissioning plan?
I have.
Okay.
Yeah. But Victoria's been taking the lead on the back and forth of the applicant on it to date. But I understand it was submitted formally. Maybe if it wasn't submitted formally, maybe it was just submitted to her from the applicant. I'm not sure.
We'll get it.
Do you remember approximately when it was submitted?
I know one was just submitted today.
Okay, well, we didn't get that one. That was today.
But no, there was one prior to this.
Sure. Okay.
Okay, that covers my questions.
A couple of months ago, but I actually gave another copy to Maryland Tonight just because it was another question that we got recently.
September 13th?
September 13th.
If it's not on the website, it will be this week.
Probably is.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. No, no.
Okay. All right. Okay, so before we go to our consultants, one thing that has been brought up repeatedly is that there is potentially a need for having some independent consultants for this project to help advise the town. So in speaking with our consultants, we tried to communicate with different consultants who are involved in energy. And basically, either phone calls were not returned, or the few that were returned were basically saying, look, we do business with NISEC, we do business with Con Ed. It seemed like it was very tough to find anybody without any kind of conflict. So what was discussed was pursuing, going through essentially the realm of academia. So here we have the Pace Energy and Climate Center. Consultants and I had a phone conversation with the head of the Pace Energy and Climate Center, I'm sure it went up here, it'd be Craig Hart on Friday. And so I'm bringing this up because if we are going to look to have an independent consultant help us out with certain issues that have been brought up, this seems to be really the only route. So all three of our consultants were on this phone call. So it's something that we'll discuss. This would not be something that, you know, they're going to just kind of look at everything with respect to this site because there's a lot of, a lot of things that this Energy and Climate Center would not be able to really advise us on beyond what our own consultants can advise us on. But there are certain things that our current consultants, you know, are not able to advise us on that it seems the Pace Energy and Climate Center would be able to. So I don't know if any of the consultants would like to add to that?
I think it would just be important to discuss amongst the board about what specific items you would want this group to look into that AKRF, Berger, and Rodenhausen Schull have not opined on at this point.
Right.
So, so you can develop some kind of a scope of work for this consultant if they were to be brought on?
Right. A lot of it involves discussion of, you know, the feasibility of undergrounding.
Correct.
You know, about the heights of the towers. So this is a discussion that we can
Have now, or we can hear from the public and then have this discussion afterwards. It takes a majority vote of the entire planning board, so four members voting to have a consultant, so.
Yes. So you're now at the podium. Would you like to say something?
If I may?
Sure.
It's a little bit of a surprise.
Is it?
It is.
Okay.
18 months of a process, quite a thorough review by your consultants who
A lot has, a lot has come up, especially in the last two public hearings, correct?
No, I don't think so. They've basically been consistent comments throughout, and we've been very responsive in addressing them.
All right. I guess part of it is that, you know, you're making claims that,
Yeah.
you know, how do we know? How do we know if they're accurate? I mean, you seem like nice folks, but.
It's just that at the last hearing, it felt like the board felt comfortable with their consultants. They certainly have reviewed a number of projects, utility projects and others in the Hudson Valley.
Right.
And I actually say this jokingly, I went to Pace Law School, so I have all the respect in the world for Pace Law.
Okay.
I think you jokingly said to me once, you know, I love when lawyers testify about things engineers should be discussing, so.
I don't know if I said that.
Something like that.
All right.
So it's curious that we would now bring in a policy person to review when you have engineers and AKRFs wherewithal and experience at this point. It's just, it's been a long process to engage in this at this point. It seems like it could cause significant delays on a project that is very important.
Okay. In the discussions that we did have with, I'm not sure if he's Mr. or Dr. Hart, but Craig. It, you know, we informed him that we would look to have a report from him, what was by the end of January? He thought he could reasonably do that. Again, he needs another full scope of work, but that is what he said.
Yeah, and we'd have to look at the scope of whatever the board would consider and make sure we're not duplicating efforts, as you mentioned.
Mm-hmm.
We'd have to, we reserve the right to just take a look at credentials on who's reviewing what. And then the concern becomes end of January. concern becomes end of January, we get on a meeting, how many months does it take to get through that process?
Right.
Reviewing, going back and forth, which I think you can see probably by the bags under my eyes and the, the sound of my voice. Um, we try to turn things around incredibly fast per, per hearing session and pretty thorough. Um, so we're just very concerned about, about that.
Noted. Okay. So, um, I'll lead up to the planning board. Should we begin this public hearing? Should we discuss this further now or discuss this after this public hearing?
Well, it might be good to hear from the public first.
I would like to hear from the public.
Have a better idea.
Okay. All right. Um, and I guess just before we do that, just want to make sure our consultants have their say. Is there any less?
At this time, I've got no comments, but depending on what comes up in the discussion tonight, obviously I'm available for legal questions. And if appropriate, obviously an attorney-client session can be taken at any time.
Planner Werner?
Um, I'll just add that, you know, when you're getting services of AKRF, it's not just me. I just want to make that clear. I'm not the only one reviewing this. We have a staff of 300 folks in our office with various backgrounds. So, you know, noise specialists, hazardous materials, wetlands, endangered species. So all those things I think have been pretty thoroughly looked at. And, you know, we have agency feedback on all of them as well. Um, so if, you know, to narrow down a scope of work for a consultant, another consultant to bring in, they might have an expertise in undergrounding utility.
Right.
Site selection issues.
AKRF has not been able to provide that.
Yes, that's correct. Um, I think that's fair. I mean, it's just, you know, the board has to decide what they want to see. Um, and I'll add that I did, you know, as part of my memo to you for this meeting, I did take a look at the EJ report. We did run it ourselves, the same analysis they did, and we found the same conclusions. Um, you know, it's not an EJ area currently based on the metrics that EJ Screen 2.1 uses. Um, you know, it's not a federally funded project. It's not really subject to a NEPA review that would trigger EJ or EPA involvement, but they still went through the motions of that. And we really don't have any disagreement with that, uh, report. So, and that was, you know, again, demographic experts in my office, not just me, folks that work on NEPA EISs all over the country that do EJ work. Just want to make that clear.
Thank you, Planner Werner. Engineer Berger?
No comment.
Okay, thank you.
I, I guess I would add one more thing. I wouldn't be surprised to hear, uh, again, similar comments from the public in support of hiring additional consultants. So, uh, it tends to lead to a perpetual state of review that we are concerned about. So I think we know what people who don't want to see the project happen will say. Um, so I don't think we should be surprised by that. And hopefully we can have a additional discussion on this before the end of the night.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So with that, I'll need a motion to continue the public hearing on New York Transco. Motion made by Member Williams, seconded by Member Roman. All those in favor of continuing this public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any post say no. We have this public hearing by a vote of five zero with two absences is now open. Uh, we do have a list. Uh, I'm gonna read off two names. Uh, first person comes to the podium. Second person, please just queue up behind the first person. Uh, first on the list is Charlie Quimby. And once you begin speaking, you have three minutes.
And the second person?
Thank you. The second person is Frank Macuso. Want to say? Okay. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for doing that. I really appreciate you making an effort to engage consultants on this. And I think most in the room would as well. Now, before I begin, I wanted to echo Ms. Ino's comments about, um, information being uploaded timely. Uh, in particular, the submission by Transco for November 4th, uh, they submitted to the town apparently on November 4th. This was not uploaded to the town website until November 14th, at the same time that the agenda was posted. This gives residents one week to review the documents that they provided, which are 124 pages. And it's not, it's not enough time for, for people to go through it. Um, now moving on from that, I continue to lack confidence in most, if not all, of Transco's studies, surveys and reports. I want to draw your attention to what calls into the integrity of the information they've provided, not just the, not just this report, but all of them. As part of a July 28th, 2022 submission to the planning board, Transco included a soil and groundwater analysis. These tests were completed in August of 2021 and March of 2022. The results were only provided after repeated requests by our planning board consultants and the public. In this report, Transco included testing parameters, but no specific data results, and a map of the testing locations.
Marilyn, do you have the image? Yeah, pause your timer. This one? This the image you're looking for?
Uh, so what you're seeing here.
Give me the timer.
So what you're seeing here is the image of the soil samples in red, and the blue is the groundwater testing that Transco conducted.
Give one minute.
The image to the right is a 1970s aerial image of when the site was a junkyard. Transco keeps using the word dump or, or, uh, something else, but it was a junkyard. There's no way around that. That's what it was. Now, in that image, uh, you'll be able to see that when the junkyard was in operation, the areas on the second map I've roughly marked. You can see that these are areas where not, where vehicles were not stored. And I want to understand why. Um, the, the evidence is that, um, that there's vegetation and trees in those areas. And further from that is, is the, what is this, what is this sample? What is the soil conditions of the overall site? Not just the specific, probably not used locations.
Please finish your thought.
It is worth mentioning that the existence of polluted wells exists in Dover. An example of this is the Dover High and Middle School. We cannot take chances with, with our water, our children. The impacts from the disturbance of the site have the potential for significant impacts. I once again request that the town issue a positive declaration, require an environmental impact study, which evaluates the cumulative impacts and further consider the segmented utility development that is occurring in Dover.
Thank you, Mr. Quimby. Next we have Frank Macuso and then Mark Chipkin.
Good evening. My name is Frank Macuso, and I do know a little something about substations because I sued Con Edison over a substation that poisoned my property. The lawsuit was a federal lawsuit that lasted 20 years. I could fill this room with the information I have about substations. They blow up, they catch on fire, they're filled with dielectric fluid that becomes dioxins when it burns. Uh, my property became a super fun site. Animals became malformed, mouths in the wrong places. Several family members got cancer and died. The perfect example is 9/11 on the building number seven. There was an illegal Con Edison substation that caught fire. Consequently, there's 7,000 cancer deaths because of the firemen that breathed the fumes. Uh, in my lawsuit, uh, because of discovery, they had to clean certain areas. The men came with the toxic suits and the masks and the respirators, and they wrapped everything in plastic, loaded it in trucks, they had to go to Virginia to be incinerated. But guess what? It didn't go to Virginia to be incinerated. It came up here, and that's what I dumped it. And that's what's coming into this town. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Macuso. So again, Mark Chipkin. And then I have two cross outs, Paul Andrews, Judy Keller. So then next would be Bill Kish. Mark Chipkin?
Thank you. Mark Chipkin, 60 Hertz Corner Road in Pauling, New York. Thank you for the time to speak. I've been a long-term supporter of Dover through my work on the nature conservancy property, the Pauling Nature Reserve, where Dover and Wingdale residents have volunteered to make sure we had hiking trails and hunting and preserving the wildlife there and plants that, uh, we, that survived there. I'm here to support just in general, I'm going to talk about, um, the Transco, but I also want to talk about being responsible to Pauling citizens as well as Dover, and it works both ways. But for instance, um, the sharing of environmental responsibility is important, and I think that developments like this one and the other energy-related developments that you're going to talk about in the future and the comprehensive plan update is something that affects us. And Dover and Pauling already have a lot of kinds of shared things that we do in terms of shared services. Of course, just because there's a sign that says Dover, wildlife doesn't notice that. Uh, the aquifer doesn't notice that. And we all need to be responsible about it. A traffic jam that occurs in Pauling affects Dover and vice versa. Um, so what I'm looking at here is that, uh, for instance, if in Pauling we had some sewage, uh, treatment plant, then we decide to put more sewage into the swamp, Great Swamp River, we should be having a conversation about that as well, as it does affect Dover as it comes up this way. So in this particular presentation tonight, uh, Transco, I think, presented a lot of points. And what it comes down to is that, is it real? And, and the need to have another eye on this and another view by experts is, is extremely important. And I think that, you know, when they say that it's no effect on water quality, and you have somebody come up here and show you how it did affect water quality, that's enough of a reason.
One minute.
When they say that when they're doing a, a construction, no effect on wildlife, that's ridiculous. I mean, think about that. You know, exploding a dynamite or whatever they're gonna do and saying no effect. When they show a different scale drawing and you catch that, that's impressive. And I like, I like that. But I did do all these things that I'm mentioning, the water, the aquifer, the river, that flows back and forth. So keep us in mind in Pauling. And, and affecting scenic views, um, I don't know if you, I don't think you had the Pauling Nature Reserve on there, but we have a pretty good view from up on the top where we used to watch bird migration. It'd be really important for you to check that out as well. Um, real estate values, if it's going to affect them, there should be some compensation for people who are going to be impacted by that, as well as, uh, the fact, is this really going to make a better economic situation? And in closing.
Thank you.
I'll say that the, um, the safety plans seem incredibly important as well, and we should hire somebody outside of, uh, the, the Transco people to take a look at this, as I think you hinted at. And if each planning board member on this board, in your heart and soul can say, yes, this is, yes to these questions and you know the answers, that's fine. But I highly recommend you take time to stop and reconsider this before you say yes or no to it. And if I've said anything inaccurate or, uh, that's not represented properly, please contact me. The town board and the planning board has emails from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Bill Kish and Elizabeth Marata.
Um, my name is Bill Kish. I live in the town in Northeast. Okay, I'm over here. Um, and, uh, the, um, the representatives from Transco just gave a, quite a detailed um, report, um, which spent quite a bit of time explaining what Dover Station is not. But what they have never explained and what they continue to not explain is what is Dover Station? What is it? Um, it is a phase angle regulator. It is a valve, in other words, that can reduce the flow of electricity through a transmission line. Um, why is it necessary that it be create, that it be built here? Um, that question has never been answered. If your engineer understands it, I would love it if during this meeting you would ask your engineer to explain what it is because, you know, it would make a great deal of difference to the, the people here and probably to the, to the members of the planning board as well. Um, it seems disingenuous for them to say that it is not because of Cricket Valley. Because before Cricket Valley, there was a single line 398 that ran from, um, from, from, uh, Pleasant Valley over to the Connecticut border. And once that's very large power plant, Cricket Valley Energy was installed, adding 1.1 gigawatts of capacity, um, it was necessary to reconductor the lines, um, going between Pleasant Valley and here. And it was also necessary to reconductor the lines, uh, heading towards Connecticut. I'm not sure, and I do have a question as to whether the, um, the reconductor-ing was completed on the Connecticut side all the way. Um, but if it wasn't, it seems reasonable to me to suspect, and again, I'm just, you know, I have to guess because no one will tell me what the reason is for building this plant. That maybe one of the reasons to build the plant is because it's too expensive to reconductor all the lines all the way through Connecticut, um, in which case there are other alternatives to building this thing. They may cost more, but reconductoring those lines might be an answer. Um, they say that it's, um, because, um, because of clean energy, because of the need to move clean energy across our grid. Well.
One minute.
Without explaining in detail what the actual engineering function of this phase angle converter is, um, it's sort of like saying, uh, you know, if I ask, why build that six-lane highway? And you say, well, because of cars, you know, it, no, it's useless. It doesn't answer the question. You know, what is the reason why we need to install this valve over here and reduce the, the amount of energy? I do think that it's because of Cricket Valley, because if Cricket Valley wasn't there, as you said, you know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't need to, to do this. Um, now, it's not associated with Cricket Valley probably because Cricket Valley is a separate entity, but it's still there because of Cricket Valley. Um, I would also like to know who is paying Transco to do this? I understand that the higher level, it's being paid for by the rate payers. But I'd like to know who is contracting with Transco to build this plant, uh, not this plant, this substation, because, um, without having that knowledge, it becomes very hard to draw a complete picture. So those are the questions that I have. I hope that you can ask those questions.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Kish, Elizabeth Marata and Jennifer Lazar.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Marata.
Three minutes. You're fine. Yes. Be a great culture. Do you like?
Oh, testing. Anyway, I'm, I'm a nurse, a retired RN from New York. Um, my big concern about this big power plant, my concern about the power plant is that it's close to homes, especially the Great Swamp and the overhead power lines that are risk, high risk to birds. This is an important bird area. And my big concern is the Great Swamp. We're all, um, requiring that swamp. We need it. And I've seen huge plant go up on 22 already. Do we need another one here? I'm worried about that gentleman's land, um, that he mentioned. I mean, these are real risks to everybody who's a resident of this area. Um, children, homes, environment, it's, it's a problem. And is this a done deal? Um, do you have the ability to squash it? And my other concern is the wildlife, because I'm a great lover of the Great Swamp, and I hate to see anything damage it. Um, thank you for your time. I know you're gonna make the right decisions. Everybody here, it's pretty crowded, very impressed, is very concerned about, about all this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jennifer Lazar and then Stancie Duhamel?
Hi, Jennifer Lazar, Confederate Drive. I began my day at 4:00 AM today, as I do every weekday. I plan and prep spending significant amounts of time, making sure I do everything in my power to give my students the best education I can. Closing two years of the gap caused by COVID lockdown damage and pushing my students to be the brightest, compassionate and kindest little humans is my responsibility. I do not devote all this extra time so that our school district and community can be broken and destroyed before their eyes. As I stand in front of my classroom, I think of this tremendous battle we here are fighting for them, which they know nothing about. What good will all of this effort do if this project comes to town and strips it all the way? Our student body has decreased by 226. Our student body has decreased by 226 students from 2012 to 2021. How much smaller can we get until we lose teachers, programs, bus routes, and all the paraprofessional support jobs, when we do not have the student body to support it? The once beautiful countryside view from Dover Middle High School is now disrupted by gigantic towers, more power line structures, wires, plumes of white matter cluttering our skies, not to mention the solar panels creating a horrible backdrop for our home games and visiting teams. Even more glaring are those flashing red lights we get to enjoy during movie night in the football field. It gives a whole new meaning to watching games under the lights, too. Another concern we have for our district is the possibility of another contamination of our water supply. Although Transco is able to check the no box on being near a school on the secret app, Section E, E1D, on page 10, it is only a few hundred feet further away from the 1,500-foot cutoff. That is measuring from the property on the south side corner of Route 22 and Cricket Hill, not when the project crosses over County Route 26. We may be outside of the measurement on a form, but the footage is splitting hairs when it comes to the impact and potential devastation to the high school, to the high school property. When and how is the school going to be included in this process, if at all? Along the same concern, Transco will be building on the 67-acre parcel next to the solar field, and that lot is 322 feet from the high school. If this is accurate, shouldn't the question be answered with a yes pertaining to distance from the school? If this project does somehow move forward and the school water supply is contaminated again, will Transco be held liable, or will the taxpayers be burdened once again? We would not be sacrificing one more night away from our families if our zoning laws were reflective of our values. That is to preserve the land and put our foot down on being the state's dumping ground for energy infrastructure that poses zero benefits for our residents. Speaking of zoning laws, at a previous meeting, I requested a color-coded map overlay of what is currently in the comprehensive plan and a current color-coded map which reflected where the town is now in the proposal. Mr. Cortino agreed and put that request in that evening. Thank you. I have since followed up via email, and although Ms. Von Millen replied, I have not yet received said map or the directions on where to locate it. If you could please provide that to our community this evening, we would appreciate it. We do not want our zoning laws modified in the way it was suggested many months ago, which would result in our residents fighting these companies on a regular basis. From how it has been explained to many of us residents, and I want to repeat it now for newcomers, if the land is not zoned to invite these companies to our town, they cannot build these projects on it. Therefore, if we take residential rural zones and turn them into industrial slash commercial use, as was in the works last spring, the planning board is legally required to accept all applications. Please do not open the floodgate on us. Please do not convert the rural and residential land into zones that support industrial projects. To the 851 people who viewed the last public hearing on YouTube as of last night, thank you to all of our neighbors watching at home as well. Thank you. That is the first step. Please come join us at the next meeting in person. In closing, there are no gifts great enough to pass this through. We don't need colorful signs, new equipment, or free books for our schools. Dover is not for sale. Thank you for supplying the visuals we've been requested, and thank you to the town planning board tonight for listening to our community with regard to the Pace Expert. This was a win for Dover. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lazarro. Just to clarify something, please have a seat. Just to clarify something. So it was a request that the Comprehensive Update Committee or the Town Board create a map. It's not as though, the map, if they decide to create it, would be created sometime, like in the next year, if they decided to create it? It wasn't as though I'm, we don't get to dictate, make this map, and the map gets made for the town?
Right, I understand. So when, after the public hearing, it was that comprehensive plan update, and that was one of the suggestions that you had followed up with requesting for that.
Right.
So I was just curious if we have access to that and where would we find it? Because I remember, is it Mr. Berger? I think he had said that, you know, valued the town's input, so I know we should pass the suggestions along with the meetings and the paperwork back and forth, but I was curious to know.
Just with respect to that map, it's something that is, we suggested that it be made. If the Town Board decides to make it, they would make it presumably sometime next year. It's not as though it's, it's not as though it's going to be made just because we said it.
I understand that. So the revisions you requested, we don't see them until it's a finished product, or is it a follow-up to that meeting?
There's got to be a, there's got to be a public hearing on the comprehensive plan in a few weeks.
Okay, thank you.
So that's where you could.
You could bring it up there.
And what you want there, because it's not the planning board, it's the town board, yeah?
Right, I understand that. Thank you. You have to explain that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So next we have Stancie Duhamel and Cara O'Neil. Hi. Stancie can't make it tonight, so I'm going to read comments on her behalf. No. No, she can submit those via email. I've seen other people do it. The ruling of the chair is that Mr. Quimby's already spoken. You're welcome to make a motion to overrule me. Motion made by?
Selma.
Motion made by Member Roman. Second by? Do you know second, the motion dies. So Ms. Duhamel's not here. Okay, next we go to Cara O'Neil.
Ryan, I'm going to pass.
Okay, thank you, Ms. O'Neil. Next we have, sorry, I can't read the first name. Last name appears to be Laritis.
Yes, also.
Okay, thank you. Next we have Robert Herzog and then Rolo Vosa.
Hi, my name is Robert Herzog. Our family has been residents of Wingdale since 1955. I am the former Director of the Energy Office of the City of New York, where I was responsible for the city's position on over $3 billion of energy projects, some of which were appropriate and got built, some of which were inappropriate and happy to say didn't get built. Some of you may remember, I submitted extensive comments with regard to the original proposal for Cricket Valley Energy Plant. Even a cursory reading of those filings would find that they stated that there was ample transmission capacity to take the output of that plant. As part of the project, they had to build a new 14.6-mile transmission line that connected to Con Ed's Pleasant Valley Substation, with improvements being made to that substation, all to support transmission in the area. The filing directly states that the new line enhanced reliability and could be used to transport other sources of electricity. In other words, the Public Service Commission reviewed and approved these plans and has already weighed in on the area's transmission capacity, requiring a new line and affirming that that's that line, in turn, increased the capacity and resilience of the area lines, including support for renewable sources. Looking through the Transco filings to the town, the only justification for the project, which should really be called the Declaration of Need, is that the Dover Station is part of the efforts to improve the capacity, efficiency, and resilience of the New York State Electric Grid as it transitions to clean energy. Well, this is a little like invoking national security to justify, you know, spying on your neighbor. Under the guise and implied threat, how could anybody respond negatively to something so virtuous, invoking mom and apple pie? But it was hard to find in their filings any evidence to support this claim. For example, it is the Pleasant Valley Substation that connects to the Segment B of upgraded transmission lines from upstate, not the proposed Dover facility. An electron doesn't care if it's generated from a fossil fuel plant, a solar plant, or a wind plant. If there's enough transmission capacity to support the massive output of Cricket Valley, it's hard to understand why additional capacity is needed for something to support other clean energy sources. For example, the nearby solar plant is only 20 megawatts, a fraction of the size of Cricket Valley's. And if the substation is needed to benefit other sectors in New York State or New England, which is the interface that they talk about, then why not put the substation in an area which directly benefits from it? The definition of the location required for this plant was rather self-serving, almost working backwards from this location, to then define it in terms of saying that's what's needed. As lead agency, the town of Dover should require that the Public Service Commission provide evidence to support the claim that the proposed Transco Station is in fact vital for meeting the state's energy goals for using renewable resources, that it is a unique location to meet such purposes, and, as now been stated, get an independent review of such claims are made. In the absence of such evidence, the town should reject the application, which does nothing for either the town or our region, and only further defaces our wonderful environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Rolo Vosa and Donna Tompkins.
I think that was Rocco, that was the attorney for the holders. He probably just signed in.
Oh, I see. Okay. And Donna Tompkins.
Hi, my name's Donna Tompkins. I've been living in this town since I was a little girl. I don't have degrees in engineering. I don't have degrees in geology and anything else that we're talking about here, but what I do know is that when I turn on my lights, I like to have lights. When I turn on my heat, I like to have heat. I like it when I go places at night and I can see where I'm going. Our society is growing. We need ample energy for that growth. We're all talking about renewable energy, electric cars, electric everything. Well, where's it going to come from? I've heard complaints about the grid. I've heard complaints about the Swamp River, the wildlife. I've lived here all my life. It's a nice place. I've seen things go south and north and whatever. I would like to thank the board for listening to me. I realize I'm probably the only person here that is for the electric company, but we need something, and we're all in a grid. So thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you.
And I do agree that you'll make the right decision.
Thank you. Seeing no one else on the sign-in sheet, any other members of the public who have not yet spoken, please come to the podium at this time. You have three minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just to say, as the chairman said, everybody is being recorded. We have to make a good record of this. The folks who are speaking sort of far away from the microphone, just please refrain from doing that. Just please approach a microphone in the future if you're called back, like the one individual was.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Please just state your name.
Sure. Ben Schwartz, Doyle Hollywood. First of all, to thank the planning board again. Well, I'd like to thank them, considering extending this hearing further, and also for bringing on an independent consultant. I just have a couple of comments on the insincerity of Transco. Again, as repeated before, submitting a 124-page document less than 10 days before this hearing, I don't think any of us are really getting paid enough, except for the lawyers, to read that many pages. It's a lot. And then also, just their refusal, their refusal to even consider burying the lines in this project, when they buried them in much higher-income communities such as Darien and Greenwich, Connecticut, two much higher-income communities. Also, Transco claims they're promoting renewable energy. Meanwhile, they're currently building a fracked gas pipeline through Brooklyn, New York, against, as mentioned in the last hearing, all the major politicians that represent that community, and I don't consider them a renewable energy company for that reason. The entire public is against it down there, but they seem to be ignoring that. So I have another question. Why is the Dover Station so much bigger than the Pauling Station? Pauling is a bigger town. And additionally, I am concerned that this project violates the New York Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. Section 7.3, that stipulates that state agencies are not allowed to disproportionately burden disadvantaged communities when issuing permits or granting approvals or licenses. I think, as we all know, it's really important that our town follows the letter of the law, especially when it pertains to protecting our town residents, as we can ill afford to expose our town to future legal action. Regarding Transco's recently submitted environmental justice support, Transco did just prepare a 69-page report as part of their overall submission after the last public hearing. Clearly understand the magnitude and importance of the environmental justice issue in this subject, otherwise they wouldn't have had such a big report. However, they continue to distort data, divert attention from the facts. EPA, DEC, and CLCPA, which I referred to, all concur that we are in an environmental justice area. The proposed site is fully within an environmental justice area. Transco has skirted permit criteria at various agencies to avoid EJ policy, but as lead agency, the planning board must consider this. They started with a 0.5-mile buffer, which the EPA suggested may not be correct. Also, as repeated, that the EPA has an 80% threshold, that is also not correct. Technically, anything over 50% is considered above average, and we are well above that in many categories. It is important to note that the data does not yet conclude pollution or impact on Cricket Valley Energy. In the most recent submission, Transco has now extended the buffer to 3, 5, and 10 miles out. Why? Why? Is this an effort to try to confuse us with useless data? I want to draw your attention to Page 33 as well. EJ is not subjective. It's not an option.
Mr. Schwartz, Mr. Schwartz. Give us your thought. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And our town must adopt and enforce policies to protect your residents. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Please come to the podium at this time.
Hi, good evening. Holly Marcy, Cricket Hill Road. I'm glad that at this late stage of the game, that we're finally getting an independent consultant, Mr. Hart from Pace. I'm amazed that Transco has been working on this for 18 months, that we just found out about this fairly recently for the public. It concerns me that the public is asking all the questions that I think the board should be asking. To have no questions on their proposal is, boggles my mind. Again, they neglect information. They don't have the high school on the point of interest, much more important than the stone church. They did not answer my question about the incidence of underground repairs in Greenwich. Again, they're probably required to do underground. Sorry. Why Dover? Again, why not Pleasant Valley? Why not someplace else? I understand we all need electric. We all love that switch, but it shouldn't be on our back. Again, Cricket Valley Energy, I look out my bedroom window and I see 250-foot towers with blinking lights. Everyone that's on 22 sees this monstrosity. We've done enough. I wonder if our planning board has spoken with Fish Gill and Pauling or Connecticut about insight on two-buck questions we should be asking Transco. Part of their report, again, they state that real estate values would not be impacted. I can't even imagine where that person came from. And again, the environmental justice review, I think we should fall under that. So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is David Pereira. I also live on Cricket Hill. There's been a lot of answers on everything above ground, but we've yet to hear anything about below the ground, the blasting. How deep is that going to go? What holds that pole up that's going up? How deep is that going to? I come in and out of Cricket Hill, and what I see is Cricket Valley. What an eyesore. Now I've got to look at a bunch of cables that are running across our road. Another eyesore. And where does it stop? And really, it's depressing. It's just an ugly thing to see, considering we moved up here to look at trees, not a bunch of cables and buildings and towers, and that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other members of the public wishing to speak at this New York Transco public hearing? Please come to the podium at this time. Say your name.
Ildio Orlando, Cricket Hill. Maybe I take this off. I like that picture that they provided from 22, showing the plant vegetation and what is it going to look like when you are on 22. I think we are more concerned about what is it going to look like from Cricket Hill Road, because that's residential houses, and it's one of the most scenic roads of the town that they are about to destroy. So can we make a request to see a picture like that as you were walking on 22? I mean, 26, not just 22. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who have not yet spoken, would like to speak in New York Transco, please come to the podium at this time. Any other members of the public who have not yet spoken, would like to speak in New York Transco? Please come to the podium at this time. And if there's anyone else who'd like to speak, please queue up behind the speaker. Thank you.
You can have that pen.
Oh, thank you.
Hi, Philip Van Buren, fifty-four, Askins Road in Wingdale. Um, in the brief time we've had to review, uh, AKRF's responses to previous public comments, um, I notice in the, uh, document they submitted on, uh, its impact on real estate values, that the comparison they're making it with is with other substations, but not with substations that are part of a growing energy infrastructure complex. Uh, it is the overall complex at the corner of Cricket Hill Road and Route twenty-two that makes such an impression on everyone traveling through Dover, um, and that depresses real estate values of the entire town. It's not just a question of comparing those with a view of the plant versus those without a view of a plant. Um, I live in Dole Hollow and yet I feel that my town is degraded by this expanding infrastructure complex. So I think that they're, methodologically, they're asking the wrong questions in appraising the impact on real estate values.
Sir, just one. You said AKRF.
We didn't prepare that.
Oh. Yeah, AKRF, that's the town's consultant. You meant Transco.
Sorry. Okay.
Or their consultant.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Your point is heard. Thank you. Okay. State your name.
Good evening. My name is Keith Casby. I live forty-eight Foxwell Terrace. I've been there for about seventeen years. In the past three years, I've seen ten to a dozen bear sightings on Fox, Foxwell Terrace and on my property in particular. Um, in the past three years since those poles were put in, since they turned around, went through the woods, up over hill and dale, putting in those, those poles on that line. In the previous dozen years, I never saw any bears at all. That's how deep those lines go into the woods. That's how disturbed the wildlife is in this area.
All right. Are there any of the members of the public who haven't spoken yet, would like to speak in the New York Transco public hearing? Please do so at this time. Seeing no one else approaching the podium, uh, the, um, planning board needs to, um, vote on what will happen next with respect to public hearings. And then also, as I brought up, a vote on, uh, hiring the consultant. So, let's, uh, start with the public hearing. Um, is there any member of the planning board who wishes to close the public hearing?
No.
Okay, I've heard sufficient knows that the, there won't be a four, um, or five, you know, there won't be, there are minimum four votes, uh, to close the public hearing. So we're not closing the public hearing. Um, okay? Uh, so then back to the applicant. Um, we won't be closing this public hearing. Will you be, uh, making any, uh, additional submissions, um, to the planning board?
Thank you. I think at this point, excuse me, I think at this point, uh, I believe you just mentioned there'd be a discussion on whether you're going to retain additional consultants?
Right now, we're discussing when, as we are not closing the public hearing, when we will be continuing the public hearing too. So, that is the current topic of discussion.
I'm su, I'm certain we will submit something else, but I guess I'd like to hear, uh, where the board comes down on the additional consultants, just in terms of efficiency and timing.
Okay. So, we'll get back. Um, okay, so then our next meeting is, um...
December fifth.
Monday, December fifth. And the one after that is Monday, uh, December nineteenth. Uh, the, uh... So the, um, the deadline for the December nineteenth meeting would be, which date again?
December second.
December second. Um, you did hear, um, additional questions raised. Um, would you have responses to the public by the December second deadline? You might have to do this a few times.
The location of the podium is throwing me off.
Sure.
I think we have to review what comments were received tonight to see to the extent, uh, we haven't addressed them somewhere in the record. Um, I know a number of comments that I'm taking notes on have been addressed. Uh, so, I think we'd like the opportunity to look at those before I commit to what we file and when we file. Um, there are some comments that may not have relevance to a, to a site plan and special permit application before a planning board, so we just wanna digest what those are.
Okay.
Should I stay here?
Sure. Following the, uh, December nineteenth meeting, the next meeting of the planning board, because of various holidays, will be Monday, January twenty-third. So, it, the decision of continuing to a particular date is up to the planning board. Would you like to give your input to the planning board as the applicant?
My input is we'd like to move as quickly as possible. Um, but I'm also, I don't wanna be here for no reason either, right? So if there's nothing to happen at the next meeting, then, and we end up at the following January meeting, of course, we'd rather be sooner than that. Um, but if you're gonna retain a consultant, then we have to address that. We have to look at who that is. We have to look at what they're gonna, the scope of review. So I'd like to do that, um, before deciding if we're gonna come back in two weeks, or four weeks, or six weeks, or eight weeks.
Well, the choice is for, um, four weeks or eight?
January twenty, January fourth is the deadline for...
Nine weeks. Everybody, I got a master's of math. I can count weeks. Nine weeks. Four weeks or nine weeks? Those are the next two meetings that would be of concern, I think, to Transco, not two weeks.
Okay.
Your input is you would rather have a continued public hearing four weeks from now or nine weeks from now?
I'd rather have a continued public hearing in four weeks with any, whatever, whatever response we're getting from an additional consultant if the board decides to go in that direction.
Okay.
If we're not gonna have a consultant in four weeks, I don't know that it merits us being here in four weeks. That's, so that's my answer.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. All right, so let's, so let's set aside then the four weeks or nine weeks from now public hearing. Let's discuss the consultant. And speaking with the consultant, uh, they felt that, um, or the potential consultant that we haven't voted on yet, um, they felt that they could get a, um, report to us by sometime in January before our January twenty-third meeting.
Sorry, what, what's the definition of the scope that they'd be doing?
Right, that's what we also need to discuss, is what, what the scope of work is.
The more you pile on, January is less and less likely.
Sure. Yeah. So that's also part of the discussion. Um, but correct, he thought that he could get with a, you know, limited scope, that he could have a report to us by January twenty-third. Is that anyone else's recollection of the call?
This is my first call.
Okay. All right, so, um...
But wait a second.
Yes.
January twenty-third doesn't allow any time for them to comment on the report.
Mm-hmm.
Or even for our consultants to comment on the report.
Right. I think what was this...
For the meeting.
I think what was discussed is the, the previous week is when they felt comfortable they could have the report to us.
Insufficient time for us to review some of these issues.
Yeah. So, you know, on Monday, the sixteenth of January is holiday, so they were thinking that they could have it to us seventeenth or the eighteenth or... Again, does not give very much time, um, for review before the twenty-third. Um, but, yeah, I think that's where we are with this. So, uh, let's discuss the, so again, still haven't voted on when the public hearing would be continued to. Let's discuss the scope of work. Um, what has been discussed that, um, our consultants have informed us that, um, someone outside of the expertise of their various companies was the undergrounding, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, then, um, with respect to the, um, land value, is that another one that was, uh, discussed?
I think we mentioned that the property values report is something they might wanna look at, and then also just the general, um, you know, rationale behind this site being selected.
Okay.
But, this is me.
Right. And I think, was that a bit of a, that last part, was that a bit of a legal question as to, um...
Are you referring to the realty values?
No, no, that's a sec, that was the second thing. The last one was about the, uh, sighting of the site.
The location.
I, I mean, I would say that, that both the, the realty values and the sighting are a little bit outside of what this board has the authority to look into.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, ultimately, for a site plan application, we're looking at this site.
Right.
Whether or not this site is appropriate, whether or not this site is, uh, potentially gonna pose a, a danger to health and safety.
Right.
To the welfare of the community, to the community's character.
The realty values is something that was submitted by the applicant.
True. But, uh, if Mr. Miranda wants to come up and, and explain what he did a little more, obviously, he, he prepared it in response to public comments.
Right, correct.
But at the end of the day, it, it is not necessarily an appropriate, uh, topic to hang the, the decision on one way or the other.
Mm-hmm.
I agree. It was a, it's information we're trying to provide to be responsive to comments we get, so we're not, not answering them.
Sure.
But I agree. Property values tend to be outside the scope of a site plan and special permit application. But we've given it to you because if we didn't, then we didn't give it to you. So, I agree. Um, with respect to the scope...
I'm just sorry, but in giving it to us, doesn't that open it up to public scrutiny? As we've heard?
Sure. If, you almost, that, if you go with that reasoning, then you don't wanna answer any of the questions that you get outside.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, exactly.
So...
So, I agree. So, I guess in terms of the scope of review, uh, you know, those other topics, in my opinion, are certainly, I haven't looked at Mr. Hart. I haven't looked at his credentials.
Or Dr. Hart.
Dr. Hart, apologize.
I don't know. I'm saying it's Mr. Hart or Dr. Hart.
Uh, I haven't looked at his credentials, but it, I can't imagine that's part of his, his scope of review outside of anything utility related, otherwise you have a team here.
Yeah, I think, well, my comment about the site was more like, so the boards are viewing this project pursuant to zoning code, right? The CO zone allows this by special permit. You're looking at the site plan, this site. My, what I was thinking was that there are, you know, their information about why NISO said this has to be between CVE and, and Connecticut, if that's something that they can also look into, the validity of that. Cause they presented that for the record, so why not have the consultant review that too?
Okay. Cause that's not something AKRF is able to, right?
Correct.
So, um...
It's not a site selection analysis, in other words. It's...
Right, it's not...
It's a peer review of the information.
Again, like I was saying before, you know...
Correct.
You're giving us all this information, obviously, we hope in good faith, but we don't know. Uh, that's why we hire consultants, and they're, they're amazing, but, you know, they can't, they can't cover a hundred percent of this project. They can cover ninety-seven, eight, nine, whatever, some high ninety-something percent of this project. So, just trying to fill in the gap in the best interest of the public and with respect to health, safety, and welfare of the community, which, as you know, is our charge, um, that's why we're discussing this. So, um, okay? Let's hear from the planning board members as to anything else that maybe should be considered?
I'd like to know about environmental justice.
Okay.
Is that something that would be under cases?
I mean, our, our consultants, AKRF, have, uh, already submitted, uh, their professional opinions and expect environmental justice.
Victoria's office, we've looked at it...
As has the attorney's office.
Numerous times. We raised it at the beginning. We saw the DEC original comment letter, and we analyzed it then. We analyzed it against new census data the DEC didn't have. I mean, I think we've, we've talked a lot about this already.
Hmm. And the idea is that it's really the consultant, like I, um, just said, trying to fill in the, what gaps there are.
So you're not seeing that as a gap?
Undergrounding. I, I just think, uh, the, the concern could be that, um, we've had the opinion of our attorney, we had the opinion of our planner, um, we hire them for their professional opinions to then go ahead and say, "Well, you know, we'd like yet another opinion." Uh, could raise some, um, concerns down the road, um, potentially with Transco saying, "You're just, um, trying to bilk us from money." But, um, but again, that's maybe more of a, now, a legal question for attorney's...
We didn't say that, by the way. I just...
I'm just, I, I've, I've been at enough meetings to...
No, with respect to undergrounding, I...
No, no, I'm saying, in terms of, you know, we hire another consultant to review something that we've, we've already had reviewed.
No, no, I agree. By regulation, you can't duplicate efforts and...
Yeah, so, but we'd like to hear that from our own attorney, not you.
What was the question? Could you just state it?
About whether we can just keep going out to consultant after consultant, going over the same thing again and again.
Uh, that, that is, uh, not going to hold up in a court of law, unfortunately, if Transco, uh, chose to, uh, pursue an Article seventy-eight action on this. Ultimately, at the end of the day, um, shopping for experts at, at some point is, uh, obviously going to show that there was an inappropriate review of this site plan application. Obviously, the board has to make an appropriate review...
Mm-hmm.
Of, uh, all aspects of it, the undergrounding, for example.
Right.
It, it seems like none of the three of us really have the expertise on that.
Sure.
As to the, the other issues raised, uh, as you've noted, they, they do seem to have been addressed.
Okay.
So, okay. So are there any other issues that any members of the planning board feel have not been addressed that need to be addressed? Anything further, Member Roman?
No.
Anything further?
No.
I mean, anything at all? Um, Rinaldo over here.
Uh, well, I've been on the planning board for a long time, and I've seen many instances. We have top-notch, top-notch consultants, and there's been a lot of instances where they've pushed back hard in certain areas against an application. It's the applicants, it behooves the applicant to present their application, obviously, in the best possible light. And, uh, they wouldn't be doing a good job if they didn't do that. And then, everything may sound good to go, and then our consultants go over it in all the areas that they are paid to be experts in. And if they let us know, "Well, you know, no, this part is okay, this part is okay." Now they've identified a very limited slice of things that they feel, uh, another consultant could help out with. Uh, so then we're gonna go ahead and go with that if we decide to vote for it. But I don't think there's any reason to include the scope of work, all the things that our consultants already feel that they know enough to respond to.
Okay.
I agree with that.
All right, so, um, all I'm hearing then really is the scope of work is the undergrounding. Um, because...
Unless there's something else that pops up that we're not aware of.
Right, I mean, was there, you know...
Let's see, I thought I had...
Yeah, that's really the big item, um, that we talked about the most.
The undergrounding, the cost versus the, the, uh, prone to accidents, whether, if it's broken underground versus broken of overhead. So, so there's two components to that underground things. And it's just what, separate them out because they both, we feel that could help with the independent person who have expertise on it, not just the cost of going underneath, but, uh, cause that may not be relevant as much as, uh, it, the contention is that the underground, if there's a breakage, it will cause a major disruption of a long period of time versus if there's a breakage, overhead, and that's something we're looking for some opinion on.
Okay.
What about the, uh, logic of selecting the site?
The sighting of the site, that it needs to be between Cricket Valley Energy and, um, and the state line.
Yeah, I think it's more like a...
Yeah, so, one of you speak.
I mean, the applicant selected the site. That's the site they want reviewed. It's not up to us to say, "Go build it over there."
No, 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 that's not what, but they said that the site was perfect because it was the only place that fulfilled the, the requirements.
But we can't, I don't think it's our purview to tell them to pick a different site.
No, we're not telling them that. We would just be asking if that was correct.
It, I don't think it matters that someone told them that, "Build it here," I don't think it matters that someone told them that build it here, build it there. I, you know, that's the site they came up with. That's the site that they want reviewed.
Yeah.
Who are we to tell them, go find another piece of land, or someone else to say, well, you could have picked this one as an alternative? I mean, they're the ones who have the money to spend it to do what they want. I don't think it's, it's not our purview to tell them to go find another piece of land and build it somewhere else.
Sure. I guess it was, I guess I thought what Member Robidier was possibly getting at was the, the truth, I can't think of another word. The truth is that it has to be between here and here.
I don't think that's part of what we have to review by law. That's not part of their application. That's what I feel. I may be wrong, but that's what I feel.
Member Robidier, do you want to say anything?
Well, I just thought that that was one of the arguments that the public can't push back hardest against. And that maybe we could get another, and then the public also wanted to have another consultant. On the other hand, I also agree with what you said, though, that it's not up to us to say, well, you should have picked another site. I was only responding to their argument of what they said in their presentation tonight.
Okay. Member Robert?
Yeah, I mean, it was really more about their, what they presented, which was that they were told that this is the ideal place it should be placed. And if this third consultant, third-party consultant wants to come in and review that correspondence and that rationale and provide an opinion back to the board.
Right.
That's fine. But I agree that, like, you can't really tell them to.
But our consultants haven't had an opportunity to address that either. Have you had an opportunity to address whether there is an additional place that it could be?
We can't really opine on that.
Again, I think it's not that is there an additional place, could be, is it that the statement is, it needs to be between Cricket Valley Energy and the Connecticut State Line. Is that true? I'm just making it very simple. There's a lot more going on there. And I believe that's.
But the question becomes, it's a permitted facility in that location, in the CO zone. So, it's like if, if a business came in and said, I'm building something here, and it was permitted, and you said to a strip mall or to a CVS or something, I don't like it there, it's still permitted in the process of the application. We provided the information because we were asked. We're trying to be responsive.
Right. I guess it's not, thinking back to earlier tonight, we're not, we're not looking at Reamer Avenue Deli and saying, well, you could build this somewhere else. That's not, I think, what we're trying to ask. I think it's that if they said, we could only build it right here, us saying, well, you could build the deli other places, because what you've said is you could only build it between this place and this place. So if the Reamer Avenue Deli people, and I'm not just, they seem fine. I'm not calling them out. It's just an example. But if they said, well, we can only build it in and around Reamer Avenue, I think the legitimate point would be, well, no, you could build the deli anywhere you want. So, I think the question is, you said it needs to be between Cricket Valley Energy and the Connecticut State Line. Like I said, I'm making it very simple. Is that true? And so, that's not something our, I think our consultants have reviewed, but attorney.
I guess I'm just asking.
That's attorney, okay. Attorney Lessig?
Just to, to state, I mean, there may be a better site for this project. That is potentially true. What this board has to review is this site proposal for this site in front of us. I mean, you know, the, the authority of this board is fairly broad, but it's not completely unfettered.
Sure.
Certainly, looking at potentially every other parcel along that right-of-way, along that piece of property where the transmissions lines are, is possible. But it's, I guess the question is how long is a, a piece of string? And, you know, how, how long does it need to be? At some point, it becomes potentially out of the, the board's, you know, legal ability to start looking at every other potential site versus just evaluating the site plan that's been proposed.
Okay.
So, the only question I have is that we're giving the consultant that we're trying to hire, we're giving him a limited scope of work.
Because again, we can't duplicate.
Right, because we can't duplicate. But if they have something else that they can offer that hasn't been addressed or touched upon, are we just going to close our years to that, or is it?
Well, I think in speaking with the representative from PACE Energy and Client Center, he was rather insistent that he have a scope of work. Now, it could be limited or broad, but he just, he said, he was very adamant, I would say, that, you know, you need to tell me what the scope of work is, and then I will only look at the scope of work. He wouldn't look at, you know, anything beyond that scope of work.
But he was selecting the scope?
No, no, we were, no, we're selecting the scope and then letting him know this is the scope of work.
He's waiting, he's looking for the planning board to give him the scope that he will use his billing rates against and provide a report to the town on.
So, here's the question I have for, for the extra scope. So, for the truth of whether it needs to be in this location or not, is that something that we could reject based on his answer? Because if not, what's the point of paying him to give us a report that, hey, great, but we can't do anything with? And same with the feasibility of underground. What, if we can't reject based on that single criteria that he's going to look at, what's the point?
Well.
Right?
To an extent, this might be more appropriate for an attorney-client session. But obviously, it's up to the members whether or not they want to make the motion for that.
I think on the underground, though, it's not a.
On the underground, it's not. What I read is not of whether the project is yes or no. The underground is, can the planning board dictate whether it's overhead or underground? And we're looking for an answer from the consultant as, what are the different, are there severe differences specifically in repair time and costs to the grid or anything between underground and overhead? To allow the planning board to make that decision, I defer to the lawyers, obviously, whether you legally can do that.
Right.
But I don't see that underground as a yes or no to the project, a direction of the project.
Okay. And I, I would just say, you know, I guess, like Member Robidier said, I'll certainly go, we have excellent consultants. But we can always reject their advice. They, it's up to us to make the decision. Rejecting their advice would bring some potential peril to the town, you know, as you might expect. So, yeah, you know, but again, this, this independent consultant can say whatever they say, and we could be like, thank you, that's great, but. Or no, thank you, you know. So, all right. Any further, so I guess.
May I?
Yes, fine.
Just to make sure I'm understanding, because this is a robust discussion. We're talking about a peer review of the underground reports submitted by New York Transco, correct?
Well, what I was about to say is, we're going to vote on hiring an independent consultant. And then, we're going to, if that passes, we're going to vote on what the scope of work is, so.
Okay.
I see members of the audience raise their hand. We can't, it's not a, it's not a public debate here as to what the planning board needs as its expert advice. So, Attorney Lessig?
I would just advise Mr. Chair, just to make that one resolution, a resolution to hire this specific person for XYZ-specific purpose, if that is the way the, the board chooses to go tonight.
All right. So, again, that's fine. Any other consultants have any other comments on this topic? Okay. Any members of the planning board? Yes, Member Williams?
If we cannot come up with a consensus of a scope of work, what would be the next step?
The next step would be that we don't hire the consultant. And then, then I think we need, that's part of the then discussion of when is the next public hearing?
So, I just want to, my last point on the underground. My, my point is, I'm not comfortable giving advice on the damage or infrastructure between underground and above ground. However, we're very capable of giving the board our expert opinion on costs, since we do that all the time. We are constructions of engineers. I've been doing them for 40 years. I have projects with Central Hudson Con Ed and many projects bigger than this for underground. So, the cost is not something that's outside my company's capability. What is outside of my capability is giving you advice on can a damage to the pipe, the wires underground versus damage and repair to the wires above ground. That's outside of my warehouse.
Understood. Okay. Any other members of the planning board have any other comments, questions of this topic?
Well, I would say that I agree with your point of the location question being one of, a question of fact. And I would add to that as a question of fact, is, is the project itself necessary at all? We're taking two basic statements from the applicant. One is that this project is needed, and two is that it has to be on this spot. So.
I don't believe, and I guess I'll go back to the Reamer Avenue Deli question. I don't believe we can ask a consultant to advise us on whether this is needed. Because, you know, maybe we don't need a deli on Reamer Avenue. That's not up for us to decide. They're allowed to make a deli, they want to make a deli. If it does well, it does well. It doesn't, that's life. You know what I'm saying? I just, I think we can't really, because again, it's not up to us to say.
Well, my understanding, perhaps.
Again, that's a more legal question. Attorney Lessig?
We're providing that information.
I mean, what I understand is that the applicant has told us that the state has said this is a necessary project. So, if we're looking to bring on a consultant, we would like to have that verified as well as the location verified.
I would argue with respect to scope, that's not a requirement for the planning board to consider.
Yeah, it's not something we're able to review.
It's outside the special permit site plan criteria.
Like I said, the example was.
Something they said, the need of something is not our purview. Our purview is their application. They said, we're going to build this here. Doesn't matter if it's needed or it could have been in a better spot. It's we have to review the application for the site, period.
Part of what I'm thinking of is also as the, as a planning board, our responsibility to the public and what I've been hearing in the public comments. And I think that it's our responsibility to do what we can so that the public feels confidence that we have done our due diligence in reviewing the claims that have been made by the applicant.
Right.
And in this case, I'm talking about two specific claims.
And I understand, but we have.
And it's needed here.
The checklist in the, the code book of what you can check, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, to approve and do. It doesn't matter whether we like it or not.
Disapprove it.
It's whether it's allowed by law.
It's information that would be of value for the planning board to be able to provide to the public. Not whether, not that it would affect approval or disapproval.
But if it can affect our decision, what's the point in dragging it out to do it?
The point is being responsive to the public.
But if it's not a check, it's not legal.
I don't understand. Look, I love to know stuff. In concept, as you could see by Transco, they try to be as responsive to the public as possible. And in these cases, there are questions that come up, where you answer them, and then you get more questions about them that may not have relevance. But you try to be responsive and transparent.
Right.
And then now, we're going to be hiring consultants to review issues that are outside the planning board's jurisdiction, issue of decision.
Right.
So, it raises questions on whether that can be charged to the applicant or not, that raises questions of whether or not that could be considered as part of a decision.
Right. All right. I guess I would say, to what you're saying, what you're both saying, and again, we could have our Attorney Lessig weigh in here, is that the town of Dover has a town code. And it's our responsibility as the planning board to follow that town code with whatever project is proposed.
Correct.
And what can happen is that something can be proposed, and whether people like it or not, if the town code allows for it, and the applicant does everything that they're asked to do, then the planning board is left with one choice. Attorney Lessig?
More or less, that's the case. I mean, again, every site plan review is unique to that specific site. If you find that generally in a certain zoning area, something is allowed, but for some reason, at this specific site, it's just too small, it's going to create too much of a traffic issue. Ingress and egress onto the, you know, the adjoining road is going to be dangerous, for example. That would be a, a site-specific reason to deny something that is otherwise permissible. I just, you know, again, perhaps we can do this at an attorney-client session in the future, maybe want to review a little more.
Well, we can go to an attorney-client session now.
If you all want to make a, a motion for that, I'd happily.
I could have one, just one thought, too. I mean, so you're reviewing a site plan, right? And the undergrounding and the towers is part of that site plan, or the, right now, it's proposed over the road. That's part of the site plan. It's part of what you're reviewing.
Yeah.
And if you want another view on, on the feasibility of that and what's involved in that, and how that affects the site plan, how that affects your special permit findings even, I think that's reasonable. You know, there, because of the fact that there is, you have to make special permit findings, one of them, a few of them being related to the environment and traffic issues and general community character, right? You could see that, you know, undergrounding wires and closing Cricket Hill Road, what's that going to do? How long will that take? What is that going to involve? And is that a detriment to the community? Again, it's something that this consultant can look at, too. It is part of the site plan special permit lens, in a way. But the site selection, like, is this the right site? It's a little, that's difficult to, to use your authority on because you can't. I mean, this is CO zone, it's permitted by special permit. That's what you're tasked to look at. So.
All right.
That was my attempt to try to say that, you know, the undergrounding versus overhead is kind of tied to the site plan that you're reviewing.
Sure. Okay. Motion to enter executive session for attorney-client discussions?
As to the, the scope of the board's review?
Hiring a consultant for New York Transco, seconded by.
Member Williams.
Member Williams. Discussion. I think we should. Seeing no, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor entering said executive session, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. And a vote is five-zero with two ayes and two nays in an executive session. We're, you could say, we're going to go.
Tell her to pause the video.
You do, hold on. You should pause the broadcast, please. All right. I need a motion to exit the, I need a motion to exit the attorney-client discussion, executive session that we just had with respect to New York Transco, motion made by Member Williams, seconded by Member Villano.
Doesn't matter.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We are back. No decisions were made. No money was spent. That's just, I always have to say that one, it's kind of supervising, so. I don't know if that still holds, but no decisions were made. Okay. So, Madam Secretary, could you log back into the computer just in case?
Sorry.
No worries, no worries.
I think it's time for me to sit next to you.
Yeah, maybe. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So, our attorney is crafting a resolution with respect to hiring an additional consultant with a scope of work. And I guess I need to vamp for a minute or two here.
Brian?
You've got to.
Page back up, the experts, so we can read it at least?
Yeah. So, again, there's, you know, it's not just one person.
He has a doctor.
Thank you.
PhD.
Okay. Didn't come up on the call. So, they do a lot, you know, a lot of, a lot of different things. One of the things that, again, this phone call on Friday, that, you know, I was sort of, I, you know, I think it's always important to hire objective consultants that will give us their, their independent opinion, like the excellent consultants we already have. So, one thing that was brought up was, you know, do you, do you do a lot of work with municipalities? And really, up until this point, they haven't done. with municipalities? And really up until this point, they haven't done much work with municipalities, but they're starting to do that. So they, they mentioned a city down in Westchester that they're starting to do some work with. And they also mentioned how NYSERA, which is a state agency, is going to be paying for them to consult with municipalities across New York State about geothermal. So then I brought up, okay, so is this a, you're being paid by NYSERA to be either A, yay, geothermal, or B, geothermal is alternative energy that has pros and cons, and, you know, depending on your site, like work or not. And as the consultants will tell you, it was the latter. It was, you know, letter D, that they're, you know, their objective. I mean, they, they like the idea of geothermal, but they tell you what, what works, what doesn't. And so I appreciated that level of objectivity that they would provide. Does anybody have any questions about that? Or them? So Pace Energy and Climate Center? I guess we'll just hold here, Phil. The resolution's ready. Sure, and I could joke at this time about you being paid by the hour.
I mean.
You're being thorough.
You, you can certainly, you know, review Mr. Hart's CV at this time. I might recommend that, actually.
Sure.
Think, think through what I'm writing here, make sure it's the quality of the town of Dover.
Okay. So Craig Hart, he's the executive director of the Pace Energy and Climate Center at Pace University's top school of law. He's also a lecturer, Johns Hopkins University Energy and Policy and Climate Program, and a senior fellow at the Atlantic Council Global Energy Center. Has worked with governments and projects in the Americas, Asia, the Middle East, and Africa on renewable, renewables, energy efficiency, grid modernization, and microgrids, and low-carbon technologies for the fossil fuel power generation sector. In the utility, in the utility reform area, Craig advised Uzbekistan and its ongoing energy market and utility reform initiative, leading to restructuring of the state energy company. All that, and advised the country of Georgia's Ministry of Energy in reforming its state electricity transmission company. He's a member of the American Society of Mechanical Engineers Council on Standards Certification, which establishes and maintains ASME, safety and performance standards, and monitors their implementation globally. Additionally, he serves on the International Standards Organization's U.S. Technical Advisory Committee 265 for carbon sequestration technologies. And again, he's the executive director. It's not as though it's just him locked in an office for, you know, weeks, only doing this. So in, maybe our, what our consultants can chime in here a bit about the conversation we had on Friday, talking about how you, you know, what they have to offer.
Yeah, I think we were just talking about, you know, credentials, and he has an engineering background that could be beneficial for what you're looking for, for this particular scope, so.
And then, again, there's other attorneys and advisors and fellows.
And are they in White Plains, where the rest of the Pace?
Yes.
Who is that, right?
Okay.
Yeah, they're part of Pace Law School campus there.
At least part of what he said is that he, him or whoever would look to come up to the site and check it out.
Yeah, as part of his work, he would do a site visit. He would, you know, review whatever you ask him to. And he would get a lay of the land, zoning code, all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Can you read my handwriting?
Yeah. Okay. Is it all one sentence?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
I mean, I'm a verbose attorney, you know.
All right. So I move that the planning board retain Mr. Craig Hart, Dr. Craig Hart. That the planning board retain Dr. Craig Hart of Pace Laws Energy and Climate Center for the purpose of preparing a report for the planning board in advance of our January 23rd, 2022 meeting examining.
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three, yes.
Yep.
Thank you. Our January 23rd, 2023 meeting examining the proposed transmission lines of the Transco substation proposed that will cross Cricket Hill Road and examine the feasibility, safety, and other impacts of the construction, maintenance, and operation of the same, comparing the project as proposed with these transmission lines above ground as compared to potentially requiring them to be placed below ground as a condition of site plan approval. Okay. This resolution is being offered by myself, seconded by Member Roman. Discussion. All right. So.
Sorry, just.
Do you want me to?
See better if I.
Yeah, you can read it.
Thank you. You can talk, I can do both.
I can also type it in.
Your typing is certainly better than my handwriting.
Brian, leave it because I have to put it on the heading for the town.
Yeah, I'm just typing it. Craig Hart. Purpose of preparing a report for the planning board in advance of our January. The meeting. Transco substation. And this. And. And then we. Safety, and, and impacts, the construction, maintenance, and operation of the same.
I think you want a comma after same.
The project as proposed with these transmission lines above ground.
Yeah.
Potentially.
I did like this on the fly a little bit. That second proposed can go.
Least.
Ryan, I think you just want a comma after the word same.
Yeah, we might be editing a few things here, so.
Okay.
I'll look it all better read then. Okay. So it's the motion seconded, we can amend it. Discussion. Where should we put a comma?
After the same before comparing.
Operation of the same, comma.
After 2023.
And shouldn't you have in, after maintenance, possibly repair?
Construction.
Is repairing part of the meeting?
I think repair would be part of maintenance.
I think.
Maintenance is keeping it day to day.
You do have to make a motion to amend the motions.
Yes, I know. I know that. I want to get all this, I want to get all, wrap this all up in one.
I also put proposed in.
I'm not amending it for every comma.
Extra.
Okay, maintenance, repair, operation of the same. Anything further?
Oh, I think it looks good.
Our Williams. Our mine.
It's as we discussed.
Okay. Motion to amend the resolution as it's written here, seconded by Member Roman. Discussion on the amendments. Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, so the, aye for aye, okay. So the resolution is now amended. Okay. So again, we have a limited scope, focus on undergrounding. Okay. So again, this is, as I tried to state earlier, excellent consultants, they got us ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of the way there. There's a hole in expertise. I feel this fills that hole. And so we have this resolution, it's been seconded, it's been amended. Is there any further discussion on this resolution?
Okay, sorry.
Should I call the roll?
Just one thing. Shorten the date. The 23rd is our meeting, and prior to doesn't mean the Friday at five o'clock before.
Sure.
Maybe a week before.
Okay. So.
You could just say.
Prepare a report by X day.
One week in advance. Report for the planning board, one, do one week in advance.
Okay, so preparing a report, how about no later than January.
Sixteenth.
Seventeenth, sixteenth is a holiday, 2023.
For the January 23rd planning board meeting.
Planning board in advance of our January 23rd, 2023.
Oh yeah, that's still appropriate.
Okay.
Come after a report.
Well, while you're typing there, it's actually Pace.
Sure.
Energy. Just pay, yeah, Pace.
Pace Energy and Climate.
Climate Center, yeah.
Pace Energy and Climate Center. Okay. Any other further, any further discussion on the resolution as amended?
Just remove the comma after January seventeen, after January.
Yes. Any further discussion? Okay, so I'll make a motion to amend the amended resolution such as it reads as it is. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member La Robe Deere. Any discussion on the amendment to the amended resolution? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. It's five ayes, zero noes. So the resolution has been amended, amended again. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing no further discussion, Secretary, please call the roll.
Chairman Corteen.
Aye.
Member La Robe Deere.
Aye.
Member Roman.
Aye.
Member Villano.
Aye.
Member Williams.
Aye.
Okay, this resolution is adopted five zero with two absences. Okay, any further discussion with the planning board this evening with respect to New York Transco?
So, yeah, now that we've.
Yeah, we need to set, yeah, we need to set the public hearing.
Right.
Okay. I mean, my thinking is we continue the public hearing to January 23rd, 2023.
Makes sense.
Any discussion? Sorry. I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing to January 23rd, 2023 at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter is the planning working here in the public. Seconded by.
Second.
Member Villano. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion passes five zero with two absences. Now, any further, anything further with respect to New York Transco for the planning board this evening? Consultants, anything further with New York Transco? Okay, seeing nothing further. Let me save this.
Can I just?
Yes.
When you went into attorney-client session, the woman, or the applicant for the Reamer Avenue Deli came in.
Okay.
And I told her about the increase in the S girl.
Okay.
And I told her that it was going out to Dutchess County Planning and that she was on the agenda.
For the December 19th?
December 19th.
Okay. So she's informed.
So she's okay.
Thank you.
And I got, she gave me the EAF.
Thank you. I asked her for that.
Board, do you have anything else? Let me save this. We only have that. Okay.
I'll slide it a bit.
Yeah. All right. Okay, so our, our next meeting is, is December 5th, 2022. The deadline for that passed on Friday. At that meeting, we'll be talking about Harmony Lake Homestead, and there's a.
Savalos.
Savalos. Anything?
The only two right now.
Okay. And then we have a meeting on December 19th, 2022. The deadline for that.